For non-agenda items, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
Kip Ford.
Here.
All right. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm just still going to have some people coming in, so I'm going to try to go through some of the preliminary stuff here as best we can, but I do want to make a point of saying we've got a lot of people in here. For some of you who have not attended council meetings before, we can pretty much hear everything above a very soft whisper up here. So if you have a conversation you want to have with somebody, walk on out into the hallway, make sure the door closes behind you, or walk down a few steps and have it, then come on back in. The restroom is located all the way at the end of the hallway. We have coffee and water over here if you need it. And beyond that, I'll get into some more as we get closer to our discussion time. We're at consent agenda. No items. Yes, we do have items. The consent calendar consists of items of a repeat or routine nature considered under a single action. A counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. One, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation head-to-bay trail, and two, construction management contract award head-to-bay. Anyone have any objections, want anything pulled out of there?
Remove or adopt the consent agenda.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to, yeah, any discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. All right. Now, we have comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce time allowed for public comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. Okay. We're just about in the door here. We're getting there. Okay. Here's some things I want to say. We're going to be doing non-agenda items first, so if you want to talk about something that isn't part of the public record, now's your time to do it. We're going to go, we're going to roll right into the VRD issue, correct?
We have one item before that.
Oh, we've got the other one first. Okay, I'm going to stick with it anyway. I'm on a roll here. I want everyone here to understand the role of the council. This is a proposed ordinance. This was not drafted by the council. The council didn't write this up. So what I want to encourage people to do is definitely participate, share your opinions, but this is not a time to say, "You guys are trying to do this to us." Well, we're just getting this just like you are, and we're going to try and parse this out and sort it out. I'll be turning to Mr. Chandler and Mr. Townsend quite often tonight and get explanations about why certain things were in and why certain things aren't in there, okay? So this is a great time to talk to us, but keep as civil as you can. I'm big on decorum. We're not here to attack people. We're here to get to a solution, okay? So as best you can, try to keep the hooting and hollering down, and we'll have a good, efficient meeting.
Applause.
Well, we're going to limit your applause. We'll applaud you at the end, Paul. You're a good man. Yeah, so anyway, we want to keep this moving. It's a business meeting, and that's what we're going to do, okay? All right, so we are at a public hearing. Requested by applicant to continue the hearing to July 11th. No, what, what? What did I miss?
Oh, I blew right past it.
Flustered already. Okay, so anyone who, this is all agenda item four, agenda item four. Anyone not, you can call you up.
Mayor, the top sheet there is.
Thank you. Okay, well, hang on, Paul. You are second. Linda Bounds. All right, come on up and state your name.
My name is Linda Bounds. I live at 1846 Northwest 32nd. That's in the Waitoma Beach area. When I moved into my home 26 years ago, I saw the area as a neighborhood. Most people living there owned or were purchasing their homes and were proactive about their yards and keeping fresh paint on their homes. They parked off the street and leashed their dogs. We greeted each other, and in some cases became friendly enough to feed each other's cat or watch their home if they were out of town. This activity created for me a sense of community. Now I sit 10 feet away from a VRD and admit to the anxiety of knowing that my neighbors will change every 24 to 48 hours. I do not know if they will leash their dogs or park in the places designated.
Linda, I'm sorry, Linda. I don't, Linda, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but do you want this as part of the public comment for the VRD discussion?
That's what I thought it was.
No, this is the non-agenda portion.
Okay, well, I have about two minutes, and then I'll be done, if you don't mind.
Go ahead. You finish your up.
Because I'm not very good at this.
All right, I appreciate it. Sorry for interrupting.
I could call a property manager, but have found them to be not always effective. Then one day I heard how much money transient room taxes from VRDs was provided to the city and realized that any person who had a complaint about VRDs was doomed because these taxes were speaking louder than we were. As with most cities, money talks. So I ask the city council and all who make decisions about the direction of this city to think of transient room taxes as more than general fund monies. If you are going to ask me to set aside my sense of community in my neighborhood, then please consider these dollars to serve both local people and tourists. You could start by keeping old promises. Provide Ingle South and North Lincoln City a dog park. It is unconscionable that we invite people to bring their dogs to town in both VRDs and hotel rooms, and then do not provide a place where that dog can run off the trip getting here. Provide better signage and routes for bicyclists. Provide a decent sign on the highway for the skateboard park. Many dollars were spent on a traffic plan that seems to be getting a slow start. For safety to travelers on 101, the crosswalks need to be remarked as many of them are losing their strapping. Please do not complain to me and others who are living in VRD hoods that there is not enough money for these projects. $15 million can do something. There are vacant lots in the Waitoma areas. I'm sure they exist in other areas. These lots can be purchased for dog parks and will be used for their purpose long before most people find the null. Please consider my proposals as an honest attempt to keep me in an increasingly commercial area and in the city I love. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the interruption. And Paul, your turn. Oh, and as a reminder too, for folks who, come on up, Paul, who have not been here before, we just need your name. You don't have to give us your address, okay? Don't need people knowing that you're not home right now.
Good evening. My name's Paul Long. My address is 2150 Southwest Highway 101, personal mailbox 335. That's in the Lincoln City area. It's in Nelscott. This is my fourth time before the city council. I know we can't debate, but we ought to be able to discuss the fact that the Supreme Court no longer lets us ban us from living in our vehicles, but I continually to be harassed. I couldn't get shelter for a lot of men here, so I bought four vehicles, a license entitled them and insurance, so that they can have shelter at night. You can't ban them from living in our vehicle. They don't have to own it. They just have to have a place to sleep. But I've already got my ticket. I said the insurance is pending. You can't have instant insurance, but I got the ticket anyway. So I'll go to the judge and say, "Yes, sir, I had insurance on it, but they didn't wait long enough." They already are marking my vehicles with spray paint and telling the people to get out of the vehicles. Camping's not allowed. They're not camping. They're sleeping. They're parked. You want to debate that Supreme Court sort of rules that you can't ban us from living in our vehicles? So let us live in our vehicles, please. And if you want to lock us out of the bathroom 11 hours out of the day to keep from flushing the toilets because the pond's full down there, then fine. Spend a half million dollars to empty that pond, but how about spending, leaving it open 24 hours a day so the tourist doesn't get turned away, too? I tried to explain to a little old lady that walks up to the bathroom, it's 7 o'clock at night, or 7 o'clock in the morning, and she has to go to the bathroom, and they're locked. What do you tell them? It's a public bathroom, but it's locked. Come back when they're unlocked. Come back and spend your money here, but don't move here, especially if you're homeless, because they don't want you here. You've got VRD zones all over the place. How about a homeless zone? We won't let you come in and trespass, because that's what we do everywhere we go. We own nothing. Every bit of garbage we have is home garbage, so you're going to penalize us for dumping our home garbage? So here I am again, asking the city manager, "The charter says you can give me a permit to park on the public street. May I have a permit to park on the public street?"
I'm going to, we'll get to that later. We're not going to do that tonight.
So it's on Facebook right now. The debate's there. I asked the same question I asked you. Do you think the city council should change the ordinance? Well, it's a statewide ordinance, so they've got to do a lot of changing, don't they? But we're unique here on the, they don't even enforce it everywhere else, but they enforce it here because they want one thing: money. Get out of town or go see the Indians. Well, I can't do both. I'm already 86 from the Indians, and we can talk about that another time. I'm going to be soon 86 from the city, but where do I go then? You tell me where to go. Go to KOA. Well, I don't want to live in a KOA. Why can't I live in my country where I want to live on my terms? Sure, I may be normal, but you've got to be a place for me to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Anyone who did not sign up to talk about a non-agenda item, like to come forward, please.
Ladies and gentlemen.
And ladies. There you go. I'll watch out.
My name is Renee Armstrong.
And please come up to the microphone there. There you go.
My name's Renee Armstrong. I'm also a homeless veteran living in an RV. I've had many circumstances with HUD housing, VA housing, which are not pleasant, and I won't bother talking about it today, but it was a lot of injustice. Therefore, I live in an RV. I'm lucky enough to have just enough income to be able to afford the dry lot without services over at the Indian Chinook Winds. They appreciate my business, so they give me free meals once in a while. That comes in really handy. One of the things I want to talk to you all about is that, you know, a little compassion goes a long way. And if we could just show each other compassion, and I mean not just toward the homeless or not just toward the wealthy, and not just toward the people of means, but the people that have no means. The people that have no car, no RV, they sleep in a blanket. I see these people all around town, and I'm ashamed to be American. I was born in San Francisco. I was raised as the all-American boy, John Wayne and all that. Served my country, and I'm ashamed. Why is it in America we have to hide the homeless? Why can't we give them a little compassion and just a little hand up so they can survive in, you know, usually the last part of their lives in somewhat comfort? One of the things that Seattle's doing, and I know it's a big town, is they've established, with the help of groups, a small area for people that are, have little means, have an RV or a car, and they're sleeping in safety, in like a parking lot, basically. And you have all the means here. You have a dump station. You may not have potable water there at the station, but there's water available around town. Show people a little compassion. There's lots of people up there in the dry lot that really can't afford to spend that $40 every three days. I think I've been really blessed and lucky because I haven't spent $40 every three days because I've gotten lucky in the machines, and they had to save me, literally, from sleeping on your streets in my RV, which I guess is illegal here, which I don't understand because the Supreme Court came down with a decision, December 13th, saying that it's no longer illegal to sleep in your car, and it gives people a kind of a hand up without breaking the law. So I'm asking you all, have a little compassion. Have a little understanding, and let's meet in the middle. Let's live by that one simple rule of the movie about Shangri-La. Live by one simple rule: be kind. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Renee. Appreciate it very much. Anyone else? All right, we're moving in. And thank you again. Okay. Public hearings. This is a request by applicant to continue the hearing of July 11th, 2016. Request for change of non-conforming use. The property is the former Elks Lodge at 2020 Northeast 22nd Street. The property owners are Michael and Lila Bradley. Excuse me. The city council, on its own motion, called up the planning commission's approval decision. The review should be held in the form of an appeal reviewed de novo, quote unquote, or parentheses, as a new hearing. So there's a request to continue this to July 11th, 2016. Satisfactory? We don't have to do anything, right? Okay.
You just need to continue the hearing at this point.
Okay.
You don't have to go through the whole script.
Okay. Continue the hearing. Okay, great.
You need a motion, Mr. Appicello?
Yes.
I move that we continue the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Would that be, excuse me, would that be to July 11th at 6:00 PM at this location?
Thank you very much.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you for keeping me straight on that. All right. Public comment. The city of Lincoln City will consider amendments relating to vacation rental dwellings, VRDs, in the Lincoln City Municipal Code. Amendments are proposed to Chapter 5.14 Vacation Rental License Title V and Chapter 9.10 Noise Control Title IX. So just to make this clear, we're going to be talking about licensing and the health and safety tonight only. We will not be talking about land use. That's for another night, okay? So we're going to try to keep this straight, keep this orderly. A lot of people signed up. I'm going to hold you to your time, okay? So try to be concise, and don't take it as a bit of rudeness if I cut you off, but everyone else, everyone deserves a chance up here at the mic, okay? All right. Uh, duh, 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 duh. So now go to here. All right, it's now 6:20 PM. The next item on the agenda is proposal for amendments relating to licensing of vacation rental dwellings. Amendments to the municipal code are proposed in Chapter 5.14 Vacation Rental License Title V and Chapter 9.10 Noise Control Title IX. If approved, ordinance number 2016-14 will make the following changes to the municipal code. Change the maximum number of people allowed to stay at a VRD and how that number is calculated. Require insect and rodent control measures, and establish minimum water quality standards for spas and swimming pools of vacation rental dwellings. Change the quiet hours to hours between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, currently 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Establish timelines for VRD owners and local representatives to respond to complaints, and specify required follow-up complaints. Allow a vacation rental dwelling license to stay in effect for up to a year after the death of the license holder. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I may have a potential conflict of interest, and I do work for a commercial lodging facility where I've worked for the past 17 and a half years, so, just so everybody knows.
Okay. Anyone?
I may have a potential conflict of interest as I own a hotel.
Okay. And?
That's it.
And I will declare one, too, as I'm a VRD owner. Mine is in a VR zone, so it's an outright use. And I'll, as I look at this, there's some issues about the record-keeping that, it was a potential conflict, because that'd fall under me, too, but there's no real cost associated with it, so it's kind of like, well, I think I'm okay. So I'm just going to declare a potential conflict of interest on that. Anyone else? All right. First staff will present a report on the proposed code amendments and respond to any questions from council. Next, any person may speak for up to three minutes to provide comment on the proposed code amendments. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the signup list at the entrance. We ask for the mailing address. That way you can be included in the loop for any following decisions, okay? But you don't have to give your address up here. Speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present this report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight and to discuss the, this portion of the VRD ordinance. Just a little bit of background information. In February, I submitted a staff report to you outlining 19 possible changes to the VRD ordinances, policies, and practices. Since that memo, we've held several public meetings, and I might point out that I am indebted to Richard Townsend, who sits next to me. He has spent many, many hours with me, talking to people, visiting with them, going to different locations, and I am very indebted to him and probably his wife as well. In addition to those public meetings, we've completed three reports that are in your packet and are also found on the city's webpage. They include the Lincoln City Housing Summary Report, the Economic Impacts of Vacation Rental Dwellings in Lincoln City Report, and the Approaches to Regulating Occupancy of Vacation Rental Dwellings. And we've also developed two ordinances. Your packet included the one ordinance, which is titled Ordinance FF, which pertains to licensing. The ordinance that's titled EE, I'll discuss in just a moment. Your packet also include letters that we received. We've set up a special email account, vrd@lincolncity.org, encourage people to send responses. Those responses were transmitted to you electronically, and they're also included on the webpage. In addition, we have received several letters and emails since this agenda item was posted, and copies have been presented to you, and they're on your desk in front of you. As I mentioned, one of the two ordinances that we prepared, one of those is called Ordinance Number EE, 2016 EE, which is a, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17 for Single Family Residential Zones, amending Section 17, which is a land use or zoning ordinance, and this will be considered by the Planning Commission on July 19th. A copy of that ordinance was sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and a notice of the July 19th meeting was sent to all property owners in the city. A public hearing before the city council is also scheduled for August 22nd to discuss Ordinance Number 2016 EE, which is the zoning ordinance, and a notice of that meeting was also sent to all property owners. So to begin with, let me first mention what we will not be discussing tonight. We will not be discussing, all of these next items are contained in the ordinance EE, which will go to the Planning Commission on July 19th. And for any of those that are in our audience who are listening and participating, we invite them to come to that meeting for public comments on this ordinance. That ordinance includes time limitation restrictions, a cap on the total number of VRDs permitted in residential zones, the definition of accessory use in the R175, R110, RR, and RM zones, prior existing use exceptions, which are commonly known as grandfathering clause for VRDs located in the R175, R110, RR, and RM zones, and the location of future, the location of future vacation rental zones, and some parking provisions. In the February nine, or the February memo, we also discussed using the police dispatch as a call center. That is not something that's needed in the change of our ordinances, so we are proceeding with that plan, and we'll bring that to you as it's completed, ready to go. We also included a public education campaign in that memo, and that also does not require any changes of ordinances, so we are proceeding forward with that, and we'll bring that before you as well. So the items we will discuss tonight, first of all, are there any questions from you on what we will not be discussing? Okay, the items we will be discussing, which are contained in Ordinance Number 2016 FF, is the transfer of licenses, the transfer of the VRD license upon the death of the licensee, revisions to the overnight occupancy limitation, the Oregon Health and, the Oregon Health Authority Travelers' Accommodation Rules specifically as they pertain to vector control and spa regulations, changes to the quiet hours and noise standards, and the timeline for VRD owners and/or their local representatives to respond to complaints. Okay. So first, pertaining to the transfer of licenses upon the death of the licensee, VRD licenses currently are not transferable under the city ordinances. Section 1, which is on page 1 of the ordinance, we had, there's about 50 of them that we've printed up, so I hope everybody had a chance to grab those. Page 1, Section 1, provides a provision that if upon the death of the licensee, a limited transferability will be permitted for up to one year, again, upon the death of the license holder, when the property is transferred to someone other than surviving spouse, domestic partner, or trust, that benefits only a surviving spouse or domestic partner. Okay? Now, I need to make one correction on a statement I just made. The license is transferable to a surviving spouse or partner under our current ordinance. This would allow it to be transferable for up to a year to someone other than that spouse or domestic partner. Okay. The second item that is proposed in.
Sorry, Ron, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Do you want questions now? Do you want to finish up and we come back a little bit?
That's entirely up to you. If you're more comfortable with asking questions as we go along, that's fine. We'll be prepared to answer them.
Counsel, do you want to do, or just hear the whole thing, and then, or?
I'd rather hear the whole thing.
Fair enough. All right, I'll read my question. Yeah? Okay, all right, my question's in. Thank you.
Okay, Section 2, which is on page 2 of the ordinance, pertains to the revisions of the overnight occupancy. Now, under our current ordinance, we permit two persons for the first 70 square feet of rooms that are used for sleeping purposes. An additional person can be added for each 50 square feet in the rooms used for sleeping purposes. And a total of 16 occupants are allowed if the VRD was built after July 1st, 2010. So there's a maximum of 16 for those after 2010. Under the proposed ordinance changes, the maximum overnight occupancy would change to two persons per bedroom plus one additional person per property. For the purposes of the maximum occupancy, those under three years of age shall not be counted. Now, in the language of the ordinances, since this was put onto the webpage and published, there is a correction that we wanted to make, and I'm going to ask, you have received a copy of this memo. It's on your desk. For the audience, it's the second sheet. There was, there was about 50 copies that were left on the table, and I'm going to ask Mr. Townsend to explain that.
Okay. The corrections that I'm suggesting are, in the version you have in the actual printed ordinance, it strikes out the existing occupancy provisions, and I'm suggesting that should not be stricken, so it would continue in effect. The other change is actually in the new language, which is on page 2 of the, of the ordinance, beginning on line 11, where it says, "In residential zones," I think that should be changed to, "For VRDs built to the standards of the Oregon Residential Specialty Code or its predecessors," and then continue with the maximum overnight occupancy should be two persons per bedroom plus one additional person per property. What that does is it makes the, the two persons per bedroom plus one additional person apply to all VRDs constructed to residential building code standards. And leaving in the other material that we have there now, that is, is. And leaving in the, the, uh, the other material that we have there now, that is, is, uh, that is said, shouldn't be stricken out, it just keeps the, uh, the provisions relating to, uh, commercial as well, because otherwise, if, if, if it was, if it was stricken out, the only thing that would be, would be, the only thing that would be affected would be VRDs that are, uh, in a residential zone, and that's not the intent, the idea is to regulate occupancy of all VRDs. Uh, in commercial zones, it can be built to commercial standards and have a higher occupancy if they're built to, uh, residential standards, and they would still be subject to the, uh, maximum of sixteen if they're built after July of two thousand and ten, and also to the, uh, two per bedroom plus one additional person. You're giving me a puzzled look.
I spent all day rereading all this stuff.
I just threw a monkey wrench.
So that's where I'm just going to park it for now. Say, okay, in a second we get a lot of attention, so anyway, continue on.
All right, Sections Three and Four of the proposed ordinance, which is on page two and three, pertain to the Oregon Health Authority Travelers' Accommodation Rules specifically vector control and spa regulations. Under the vector control, uh, the proposed ordinance requires VRD owners or their local representatives to employ control measures to prevent vector infestations. The ordinance doesn't specifically prescribe measures other than saying debris areas, buildings, and structures shall be maintained free of accumulation, uh, I'm sorry, developed areas, buildings and structures shall be maintained free of accumulated, uh, debris. Under the spa provisions, uh, the proposed ordinance sets the standards for water quality for the spas, requiring testing to be done not more than twenty-four hours before each change of occupants, and refilling this spa at least once every thirty days. Uh, the ordinance does not propose that the city engage in testing or, uh, on our own of the individual spas, or, uh, that we hire somebody to do that. Instead, VRD owners or their local representatives should keep records of their testing and maintenance, and can check these records, uh, the city can then check these records to ensure compliance. Now, over the last few days, I've had questions regarding, um, how this works, where it came from, um, uh, uh, in the course of our discussions with the city council, and in our meetings with, uh, over the last many months, uh, with different organizations, different parts of the community, one of the comments that came up was that, uh, that the same rules should apply to vacation rental dwellings as applied to hotels as it pertains to their public, um, is, uh, their public water, spa, swimming pools, so forth. Um, so this was included as a response of those discussions. Now then, the question that has recently come up to me is that how does this differ in the testing, uh, for a spa versus the testing, say, like we do with the swimming pool? Um, and, uh, so, the standards that you see in the ordinance come straight from the state standards for, uh, things like public swimming pools. These are the standards that we have to live up to for our community centers, they're the same standards that the hotels have to live up to. Uh, for our testing, um, there's nothing really overly sophisticated about it. You have, uh, on your, on your desk, um, the, the, the testing and report form, which we use. Those are filled out on a, on a regular daily and weekly basis as we test for the different chemicals. The testing equipment that we use is what you can purchase from Walmart for about sixty bucks. Um, it includes your sampling, it has your different pH levels, your different chlorine or bromine levels, you put the water in it, um, the agent that activates the chemical, and then wherever it comes up on the, on this determines what, uh, what the pH level is, seven point six, seven point four, whatever it may be. Again, as I mentioned, these starter kits cost about sixty dollars, um, and, uh, at Walmart, and they are what we use for the swimming pool. Okay. Um, also, um, uh, proposed in this ordinance is a change to the quiet hours. Uh, under our current ordinances, the quiet hours are from, uh, seven PM to seven AM. We are proposing to change those quiet hours from ten PM to seven AM. This ordinance does not propose to change the decibel levels that, nor where the, uh, where the, uh, sound is measured from, uh, uh, under our current ordinance. Um, the proposed ordinance also proposes a timeline for VRD ordinance owners and/or their representatives to respond to complaints. Uh, the owner of the local representatives under this proposal are required to respond to the complaints within two hours after receiving the complaint. Um, they are required to keep a log and to report to the city within, um, twenty days following the complaint. Uh, the fines have not changed. Uh, now, the next part of what I'm going to mention to you is not, is, does not need to be included in the ordinance, but it is the city's response to when these, uh, when, uh, when a complaint has come in. Under our current practice, uh, we send out upon the licensing of a VRD, a, uh, a postcard, and that postcard includes the phone number for the local representative to, uh, uh, so that if there's a complaint from a neighbor, they can call the local representative. We have proposed changing that so that the postcard will list the police non-emergency number. So, uh, one of the problems that we found was that when people would get cards, they may get three or four different phone numbers. We also heard very clearly from folks in our visits that they did not want to be the police. Uh, they did not want to have to try to hunt down who those people were and so forth, they just wanted a number to call. Once the police, uh, dispatch reach, uh, receives the phone call, uh, on the non, again, these would be on the non, uh, the non-nine-one-one numbers, uh, the first determination they will make is if whether or not it's a health, life, safety issue. If it is, they will then dispatch a police officer to deal with that. If it's more of a nuisance item, trash has been tipped over, something to that effect, uh, they will send an email to the local representative with a copy of that email going to the Community and Development Department, Mr. Townsend's department. Um, the ordinance then requires the local representative to respond and correct whatever has taken place, uh, within two hours. Uh, the city, um, through Mr. Townsend's staff, will then verify that that problem was corrected within a twenty-four hour period. That last part doesn't need to be in an ordinance, it's a change in the practices, and that's the practice we are proposing, uh, for the, uh, for the city. Um, as mentioned, uh, at the beginning, let's see. Okay. Uh, Mayor, that summarizes the change, the proposed changes of the ordinance.
Okay. Now's a good time for questions, if anyone had any for Ron.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I have, um, one question, um, regarding the, um, the, uh, noise part of the ord, proposed ordinance. Um, several years ago, when we talked about this, the police department did not have the proper, uh, equipment, nor were the people trained in how to use that equipment. Has that been corrupted?
I will have to get back with you on that, I don't know the answer to that.
Hello? Okay, well, I guess I've got a question, is why are we replacing the UHC? Or we're not, we're not, that's staying in now, right? That was like, okay. With this change, you're going to just keep that, the wording, right, for the, the housing code?
Right.
Okay, never mind, that one's done.
Keep it an ads, an additional standard.
Okay. Talk about the standardized form and the testers, that's good. Complaints, uh, it says, "In a response to a complaint concerning the occupancy or use." Do we have some kind of guidelines that says, okay, this is legitimate, this is not a legitimate, we're seeing repeated, you know, we're just harassment at some point, are we prepared to deal with that?
The question that we have generally been asked, and, and I'm hoping this is, if this answers your question, if it doesn't, I'll, I'll try again, is, um, does the occupancy pertain to just sleeping over, or does it pertain to people in the house at any given time? The occupancy pertains to those that sleep at the house. Uh, so in other words, you can't exceed the limit, uh, if you have people that are over, but, uh, as far as sleeping, that is what creates the limitation.
Right, so I guess I'm just, when we're talking about a complaint, so we get a call and someone says, "I just know there's seventeen people sleeping in there." Is that going to generate this procedure? Does someone have to go and answer and respond and?
Yes.
Yeah, the local ag, the local agent should respond to that. Um, you know, I, there, there's some common sense that needs to be applied here.
Exactly.
So, but, you know, if, we get, we get calls regularly about very minor things, uh, that are easily corrected. We get, uh, if there's a pattern of things, we talk about harassment or something, and then, you know, okay, you know, thank you, and, uh, if it's something that's potentially serious, we'll, we'll follow up.
Absolutely, yeah. I just want to make sure there's a little bit of protection for people who might not be getting along with their neighbor. Okay, that's it. Um, oh, uh, under the noise ordinance, sound producing source, is that anything but a human? Does that include humans?
Probably includes humans.
So, baby crying, dog bark, well, you can still have a service animal that could bark. Are we limiting that? I mean, if we have people laughing? Because I think last time we talked about this, it was almost just a speaking voice that triggered that.
Yeah, the, the main, the main kind of complaints we get about noise is people out on the deck or out by the hot tub or whatever, carrying on loudly late at night.
Sure, right.
And, uh, so, you know, a, a dog barking, if it's incessant, that, that could rise to the kind of thing, a crying baby, you know, come on.
And that's what I'm saying to you, I just want to make sure that there's a common sense approach to this, that, because the problem is, it's written one way, and it says, here's what we're going to do if, and I just want a little bit of assurance to people here who, that no, we're not going to come storming the walls because the baby's crying. Even though it says we could. Not going to make it easy tonight. Okay.
We might if, if there was evidence the baby was being abused, but-
Yeah, good call, good call. Um, okay, that, that's it for me for now. Did it bring up anything for anyone else? All right, now, this is going to be a tough challenge for me tonight, guys, I am paperwork challenged. Where did the script go?
Mr. Mayor, I, I wonder why you're looking for that.
Thank you.
Couple of, couple of things, I'll maybe bail you out with some time.
There it is.
Um, I just want to make sure, back to the number one, the, uh, transfer of license, um, a one year of operation, and to avoid any confusion, we're, we're talking about full operation, at, at one time-
Provisions.
-that new bookings could occur in that year.
Yes.
Yes, so it's, even though someone may have passed in the, we're, we're allowing them to operate full, would that be the right word, full, full course for up to a year?
Yes, but it's, it's important to note that the year is a maximum provision. What the ordinance actually states is that the license shall continue in effect for a period of one year, or until the heir or executor transfer the property to any person whichever comes first. So it could be less than a year, uh, it just depends on how quickly the estate is settled.
And it would not be limited to existing reservations on the date of death, or?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure, because that, that was the discussion at one time, and I want to make sure we've moved off of that and up to-
Yeah, that was a good compromise, because I remember the council was discussing, what happens if I die?
Yep.
And I've got bookings, and my kids and their grief and dealing with things shouldn't have to deal with this too, uh, and so, good compromise on that. Okay. Continue on, please.
On occupancy, um, I, I like the revised modification, that made more sense. I guess I would, um, further suggest a clearer, clearer, um, maybe some kind of a catch-all at the very last, it says something to the effect that, you know, in no case to exceed sixteen occupants, uh, again, for sleeping. I mean, it, we've talked around it, um, by referencing the code and everything else, but, you know, why not give a number, um, since that seems to be what got us into this issue, avoiding numbers, and just say, for clarity's sake, you know, that not to exceed X would be a suggestion. Um, the other thing I saw, um, on the calls to the police, the dispatch, um, if I'm following it correctly, it looks like we've got a, uh, dispatch kind of keeping a report or log of these kind of calls coming in, as, as well as the property manager also keeping a log of the-
There's actually three separate logs that would be taking, uh, that would be had on this. The police, uh, they do log calls already.
Right.
And so that would continue. Uh, the planning department would also be, uh, logging in their response, uh, as they receive those emails. And then, of course, the ordinance also requires that the, uh, the, uh, local representative send a response back to the ci, the city within twenty days.
And I, I don't mind the response back. Why the logs? I mean, that, if the dispatch has a log, because that's where the call's going, I, I just saw that, you know, that, um, was in, and the owner, local representative must maintain the logs of complaints showing the date. I mean, I'm, I'm really not big into paperwork and red tape, why are we having them do it? If they want to, fine, but why, why add that layer, um, of mandate to the property manager?
That's currently in our ordinance, and we just simply did not strike that out, so.
But is, I, I guess I, I throw it out as maybe a question to this group, you know, it, it might be a good business practice, but we have a tendency from these podium, podiums to be willing to lay a lot of work on the small business, and that might be one you could eliminate, but-
I agree with you.
Um, the other, I, I guess I had an overall question in that is the enforcement, um, and that's always been the issue, when it, when the rubber hits the road, is, uh, we've put some time elements in, we've identified what the issues are, when to call, and I, I like that kind of idea. Um, two hours to respond, um, is certainly, if, if you're the person who called, that's way too long, um, if it's still going on. Um, and I'm, I guess I'm, the, the police, I'm going to assume it's a lower priority, um, and so it's just going to kind of build, if it, if for some reason, the, the hot tub noise, and I think, Mayor, you made a good point, um, I'm envisioning sitting out in a hot tub at ten-thirty at night, quietly talking above all the jets in the hot tub, um, the dead of night, and that's a loud conversation, whatever you say. And at twelve, the guy down the street is still pretty angry, um, and the police haven't come, you know, what do, what do we do? Other than log it in?
I'm going to bring Chief Killian up here to address one portion of this, and while he's coming, again, let me divide this into two different types of calls. For those that are life and safety issues, the police will be dispatched.
I'm, and I'm believing they would.
For those that are more of a nuisance, um, the dispatch will email the local representative, um, and then, and, and copy us on, uh, Richard's department on, uh, that email. Uh, that, for those non-life safety issues, for the ones that are not dispatched, those are the ones that they have two hours to respond to, and then we will follow up to verify that they have been taken care of in twenty-four hour period. Chief, I'll let you respond when you're dispatched.
When we dispatch?
No, when, yeah, to the first part of the question. For those, for those types of calls that are related to life and safety issues.
Right, so when those calls come in, they will be queued in the- Right, so when those calls come in, they will be queued in the, and prioritized with whatever's pending or going on at that particular moment in time, but those would certainly be dispatched and well within two hours. I cannot foresee that holding in the queue that long, even as short-staffed as we are.
Even the non-threatening?
So, so what we are envisioning, the police being called out to respond to that night, are those issues, the loud noise, whether it's coming from inside the house or from the hot tub, loud verbal arguments, disturbances, fights, those types of things. If they're, the parking complaints, the trash-type stuff, those are going to be queued to the community development office. We're not even going to respond to those types of issues. Just those issues that are of an imminent need for somebody to respond to, referee or to take care of the matter.
And, Chief, just out of curiosity, dispatch, you log everything in anyway, comes in and recorded, so that has...
Yes.
If there was ever a dispute about something when it came in, you know, your records are available, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, again, I'm just getting back to the need for all these logs, that no one would question your logs. If they did, they could easily get a recording or written.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Oh, did you have a question?
Chief?
Chief. Thank you very much.
And then, staying with the hours, I guess, I'm wondering if we wouldn't have some kind of differential hours for construction, work-related versus normal, human neighborhood kind of activity. The seven to ten makes sense for human activity, I'm just wondering, I'd hate to have a, a power gun, hammer gun going off at nine-thirty at night.
Yeah, I thought we had a seven o'clock cutoff on construction that was separate from this ordinance.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is there a place that would, could distinguish?
There is, currently, there's a little bit of an inconsistency here, because currently there is a nine o'clock cutoff for tools, household tools. So, the discussion, and the amendment was maybe two or three years ago, about lawnmowers. So, lawnmowers could go till nine, even though the quiet hours ended at seven.
Well, no, I'm bringing up, because a friend of mine who's a contractor had people calling in when he would run his saw at seven-oh-one, and, and he would try to shut down immediately, of course, and so there's no separate construction?
There is, there are a number of exemptions in the ordinance, but the household exemption was the one that went past seven o'clock.
Okay, all right.
Allowed the use. There, we had other construction exemptions for construction on Highway one-oh-one, for example, that we added to the code, but there's just no general...
Okay.
I can look it up again, but...
No, that's fine. I was under the impression there was a separate one for that, but...
There is, there is an exemption for, for construction, but not, I think it's to the decibels and not to the hours. Let me, let me take it.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry for interrupting.
But again, just something that distinguishes, I guess, on that, and that's all I have.
No, because I lived above five years of construction, and it was nice to say, "Okay, at seven o'clock, you're done, and I don't have to listen to hammers anymore."
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I did have...
I'm sorry, Kip was next here.
Okay.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
You know, it's really hard to expect the VRD owners to be responsible for their customers' behavior, because you can tell them where to park, but you can't force that they park there. You can tell them they have to be quiet, but that doesn't mean they're going to do it. To me, the issue is, is being able to respond to those complaints quickly, not two hours, but very quickly, and if the VRD owner or manager gets out in a short period of time, fifteen minutes or whatever it is, then they're off the hook. And the only way that you can get, get things coming against you, their behavior comes against you, when you forfeit that one thing that you, that you can't control, and that's being there in a timely manner. And so, I would like to see in, in that part of the ordinance, a greater, a different type of accountability from the VRD owners. And as long as they come and address the issue in a timely manner, then there is no issue. It's only when they, they fail to come after being notified that there's a problem, then there's an issue.
Okay. And I have an issue with both parties having to come out. It says owner and representative.
Right, just, just whoever, whichever one's...
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I, I meant to ask a moment ago, this maximum overnight occupancy, it has, nowhere in here do I see sixteen, so I'm curious about that. But in all of the paperwork here that I can see on it, it, it specifically eliminates those under three years of age in the, when you're counting maximum. So, are we saying that there could be sixteen people over three, plus, what, another sixteen under three, if they so chose? I mean, I'm just, I'm just questioning that, because motels have limits on how many people can be in a room, whether they're, they may not have to pay for the little ones under a certain age, but you can't still, you still can't pack people into a motel room. So, I mean, I'm just kind of curious. That seems to me to be a big hole there, and maybe not.
The lodging house rules that were referred to there doesn't exclude anybody from the sixteen, so it's sixteen people, period, of any age.
Okay.
But the, the two per bedroom plus one says, but you don't have to count people under, under three years old for that two per bedroom plus one. So, you have...
Yeah, well, then I would suggest that we make it a little bit more clear, if we're going to put this in here, because when I read it, it says, "For the purpose of maximum occupancy, those under three years of age shall not be counted." And that's, that seems to be running counter to what you just said, but nowhere do I see what you just said, and if, if I'm renting that, I doubt that I would go look up the UVC lodging house limitations anywhere. So, I'm just... Just questioning.
Mayor Williams? Mayor Williams, sorry, I got a report that people are not hearing you, and Mr. Townsend, you need to speak more in your microphone.
Oh, my goodness, that's a first, all right. Did you catch that, Mr. Townsend? No, he's not even listening.
During the, in our, I'll just, I did state that the exemption for construction is decibel level between seven AM and seven PM. So, those are the hours you can do construction, it's just that you're excused from the decibel level.
I see.
Mr. Mayor, also...
One second, Mr. Townsend, we've received a complaint about you in particular. No, me too, but we're not speaking into the microphone enough, so we need to get closer.
Yes, sir.
As, as that, as it pertains to that total number of sixteen and the two per bedroom plus one, under the standard that is proposed of two per bedroom plus one, if the, if the VRD is built to a residential standard, they would not reach sixteen. It would be a maximum of eleven, because we only permit five bedrooms unless the VRD has been built to commercial standards.
You know, I, I really struggle with this one. If, if you're just a single couple, a single couple, that doesn't make sense. If you're a couple, and you're traveling with another couple, and maybe a third couple, hey, that's all great. You get six people, you're good. But in a two plus one, it means three couples, one child, or two couples, three kids. And I really have a real tough time with the idea of excluding families from this. And I just go back to my own experience, as a young parent, I could not go vacation without a vacation rental, where myself and my brothers, we could bring our children, and we were classified as adults, and kids were kids, and you stack them like cordwood. You know, it's, it's, they sleep anywhere, they sleep on the deck, they sleep in their cars, and, right or wrong, but this really concerns me, that we're going to say, "Come to Lincoln City as long as you're a couple, but don't bring your kids." And that's kind of where, to me, this is where this is leading. It's a, it's a no friends policy, you know, your two kids can't bring their two friends. We talked about family reunions and how important this is to people, to be able to come to one place and share that time. Church and business retreats. I think we need to be very cautious in this, this number, and who's going to go elsewhere. You know, I'm looking at, and again, it's, it's a lousy correlation, but I was reading the story a couple of weeks back, that, you know, Newport is up ten million dollars in tourism dollars since last year, and I kind of go, "Well, why? What changed in Newport?" I've got a business, there is not that much that's changed, other than maybe relaxing their VRD limitation or restriction. So, anyway, it's something I think we need to take a good, hard look at. And I interrupted, was anyone else still talking? Because I got a ton of questions here. Okay, that was that one, that was that one. We talking about the cap on VRD numbers tonight? No?
No, that's the land, you're sorry.
Hey, I'm sorry, this was, this was the stack we had to go through today, so... And the housing shortage, I got to talk about that. I'm not going to talk about that, I'm not going to talk about that. Okay, then I guess we're getting closer. I kind of like the, as I was reading some of the exemptions in different cities, and thank you, Mr. Townsend, for your reports, it was terrific reading what other cities are doing, very informative. If we're going, against my objection of this two plus one, you know, Newport's two plus two, but as a holiday exemption, which seemed to make great sense to me, that says, "Hey, these are going to be peak times, where people want to travel in larger groups," and I would love to see, if we're going this way, do we, can we issue specialized permits? That says, "Hey, we understand, this is a time of year when people will be getting together, Christmas and whatever holidays," that we could say, "Yeah, this is a one-time exemption," and I like that. I'd like to see how Newport does that. Yeah, so I guess that's it for me. Again, thank you very much, it was very informative, I didn't agree with a lot of it, but it was very informative. All right, all done? All right. Now is the time for public comment. And so, again, just to go over the rules with you guys, come forward, just state your name, don't need your address, please stay as close to the mic as you can. I know some folks are nervous speaking in front of others, you know, especially if it's the first time, don't feel nervous, no one's going to yell at you. If you see me waving at you or whatever, I'm just trying to get you to pull the microphone in, so you can be heard at home and on the, on the public record. Please stay sensitive to the time light, we've got a light over here, goes green, yellow, red, it's an obnoxious noise, and I'll say, "You got to wrap it up," and wrap it up. All right, so, number one, Judy Casper.
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry, good point, I think I read it, three minutes, right? Yeah, we're on three minutes, that one. And please don't take it as a rude gesture, if any of us get up and leave, it's, we're all old, so, we go to the restroom.
My name is Judy Casper, and I have a few comments about the VRD proposal. Thanks for the memo, that clarified for me the overnight occupancy, because I was concerned, I live in a mixed-use area, and so, according to clarification, the residential standards apply in mixed-use area. The second question and concern I had was in Section 3D-1 about vector control measures. To me, vector control means the limit or elimination of mammals, birds, and insects which transmit disease. So, a thought was that if we have thirty thousand people come to us in the summer, and there are uncountable number of dogs, wouldn't it be helpful to have an official, like mandatory city ordinance, that all dogs must be leashed and subject to fines, and posted where there's VRD central beach and walkway areas? Currently, there's random signs throughout the city that state, and this is what it says, "Please leash and clean up after your dog. This is merely an ignored suggestion." And I think the inordinate amount of feces that we find on our streets are dangerous and hazardous and can carry disease, just a thought. Section five, quiet hours, it's recommended from ten PM to seven. I was wondering if this is just in VRDs, but you seem to have clarified it's, there's various times throughout the city. I was wondering if sunset to seven AM might be a good timeframe, because of the flexible seasonal hours, and also, there are illegal fireworks that go on, and maybe that would deter people from not blowing off fireworks after sunset. Just thinking. Section 6C about complaints, I've used this process myself, if you want to ask somebody how it works sometime, I'd be happy to share it with you. I filed such a complaint after three of my neighbors came to me and said, "What should we do?" So, it wasn't just a nilly-dilly kind of complaint. The whole process follows pretty well, it takes about thirty days if you follow it through. My concern was that one of the areas says, "Within twenty days of receiving an oral or written complaint." My question is, how do you follow an oral complaint? Maybe you want to delete that and make it written, so you have some means of following this. That was ambiguous to me, just a suggestion. And how do you keep a record if their comments are oral? And then, finally, since VRDs have little cards that are sent out with managers' names, and I assume that these managers' names are in the VRD properties, in case there's an emergency, would it not be maybe efficient to have a website where all the VRD addresses and the contact managers or owners are listed? And I'm assuming that when people rent a VRD, they can contact the managers for emergencies. So, if there was a complaint, a person could go to this website and automatically contact the owner or rep, and maybe eliminate some of the use of our police staff.
Great, excellent, excellent information, thank you, Judy, appreciate it. All right, Deborah Van Dyke?
Hello, my name's Deborah Van Dyke, and I'm a little confused after hearing a few more things, so I'll just state what I thought should happen. The, the number of people in the dwelling, I just felt that was too low, having two plus one. I have a three-bedroom home, and I do cater to lots of families, and I would think that if they did have three children, or the other one had two children, that we would need more like a two-per-bedroom plus three, maybe plus four, you know, maximum of ten. It is a large home. The other area that I'm really concerned with, because of the cost of water and replacing four to five hundred gallons in your hot tub every thirty days could be quite expensive. I had a water pipe break, and I had a two-thousand-dollar water bill, so I do know that a lot of gallons of water can cost quite a bit of money. So, I had done some research online, and it looks more like about ninety days, three months is when you should change out the water, versus every thirty days, as long as you're keeping the chemicals and everything up to, up to speed. And then, the last one that I wanted to go ahead and comment on was the actual time after death. I heard several of you did comment on that, that, you know, there's a lot going on, and if I'm a single owner of my home, and I have two daughters, and I would want them to have a little bit longer than a year, I would recommend maybe two years, so I'm glad to see that you're at least putting that into the ordinance to, you know, have a year, so that they could make a decision. to, you know, have a year so that they could make a decision. But I just would recommend maybe a two-year period. There's still a lot going on with the death of somebody, so. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you very much. Good point.
Hello, my name is Charles Prince. My family, I help manage property for our family. We have two of the larger vacation rentals in town. A little backstory on how we purchase them is, we have six kids. And my three older kids have six, it's going to be seven grandkids here very soon. We needed a place where we could all get together with just our family. You know, if you add that up, it's my six, my three-kid spouses. So that's six, plus three other three kids, that's nine. Plus seven grandkids, that's 16. Plus my wife and I, that's 18 people every time I go stay anywhere. The houses that we own and manage are designed for that exact purpose. What I'm worried that Lincoln City is doing, among other things, is putting a "not welcome" sign out for, for the families that want to come here. If you look at our reviews on our pages, it's review after review after review of church groups, of families who came and just, and loved the fact they could all join together. And as much as I sympathize, we have family who've been in the hotel business, and I understand that. But there's, renting a block of six hotel rooms is not the same as having breakfast together every day. It's not the same as, as being able to co-mingle and sit and watch TV and have fun and play ping pong and do all those things that you get to do in a larger vacation rental. And so, I feel as though these rules are very punitive to the larger, the small number of larger homes that truly do cater to those family groups and church groups and, and business groups and quilting groups. I've got a quick review from a quilting group. You know, all these people that want to get together. I had the 4-H out here from Wisconsin just last week. Stayed for four days. They served lunch at the community hall for everybody. They served lasagna. I mean, we try to take care of that kind of group. We've never had a single complaint. And I really feel as though one of our vacation rules, unfortunately, I think people view as a major problem. Yet we've had no complaints, none whatsoever. So, my plea to you would be to consider that you're actually posting a sign outside of town saying, "Hey, you know, if you can, if you're lucky enough to find two houses next to each other, you can rent both of those," which is a more expensive option for most people. And there's very few of those. There's very few places where you can rent a place next to one another unless you maybe go out a year in advance and do a tremendous amount of research. It's not easy to get your family together. And, and in all honesty, that's why we purchased and that's the service that we provide. In doing so, we benefit the city tremendously. We're booked every single solitary weekend of the year. You can look at our VRD page and, and you'll see that. So between 35 and 45 people come to this town in January and February and December, every weekend, and they spend their money. You know, I'm not in this for selfish reasons. I, we do a tremendous amount of donations and things for churches and stuff, and, and that's just in our hearts. It has nothing to do with you guys. But the fact is, those people come here and spend money. And I'm done. But, you know, you're pulling the rug out from underneath a lot of revenue that helps support this very small community that needs industry and money, so.
Absolutely, point well taken. Thank you very much. Oh, and let's see, I did want to mention too, you see a couple of guys coming up here taking pictures. In case you haven't been here before, these are our representatives from the News Guard and the News Times. And it's okay for them to come up and take pictures, but we would ask that you not come up and take pictures of staff. Just in case you had that idea. Jerry Webb, Jerry, I'm so sorry.
Members of the council, I'm Jerry Webb. I live in Portland, but I have a house that's been my family since 1928-29, which is 3442 Northwest Jettie. We call it Watteville. Built by my grandmother, Grace Hammond. Some of you who have some gray hair may have known my grandmother. She was active in local government for probably over 50 years. Big supporter of the community. That house, my wife and I remodeled very extensively. We've been renting it maybe as a vacation. Well, we did a remodel. No intention of being in the vacation rental dwelling business, but the remodel, as remodels sometimes do, turned out to be extraordinarily expensive. And we have very, I have very healthy mortgage payments on that. And I'm here tonight to try to urge you to see the inadvisability of a two-person-per-bedroom occupancy limit. It puts me out of business. It just absolutely is the case. Because my clientele is almost exclusively family gatherings and family reunions. I think a two-person-per, if you want to have an occupancy limit, to me, which I could see how you might want to do if, I assume, larger houses are more likely to be a source of complaints than smaller houses. I can understand that. To me, it would be the number of people in the house that makes sense, not the number of people in bedrooms. It also discriminates against small houses. Think about a two-bedroom house. Standard now in motels, because they've discovered that it gives them the most flexibility, is two queens, either kings, because some people want a king bed, or two queens. If you have two queens, then you can have two people who need to have separate beds. You can have two couples. You can have a parent and some kids. You've got some options. So think about a two-bedroom house. To me, it makes no sense to say, "That person can't rent those two bedrooms with two queens." That would be eight people. Those houses are not the source of the problems that you people have been discussing for the last three years. So there's an example that I think makes no sense, but maybe it would make sense to have a cap, a maximum cap on the number of, in the house. So we already have that under the existing system. When I filled out my sheet last year, my house came out to having 18 as its cap. I don't want 18 people in my house, so I voluntarily put the number in at 16. At 16, I can seat 16 people at my dining room table. People come and they all get to stay together and family reunions, and everyone has a great time. And they book my house for next year because my house, as you know, I described, it had a lot of money put in, a really a lot, a very lot of money put into it. It's a wonderful place to stay, but there is no possible way for me to continue in the VRD business at two bed, two persons plus one. It's just not workable. And it would make Lincoln City the most restrictive city of any city in Oregon on this point. And I don't know why you want to go there. I mean, I've listened to the debate for three or four years now on how everything has bounced around and how you're going to deal with the problem.
Jerry, I'm going to wrap you up. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Okay. Linda Bowne. Linda? Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Carolyn. There she is.
Sorry, that's confusion.
That's okay. Welcome to the party.
I'm often called Carrie so far. Carrie and Jerry. I'd like to make a few comments. Good evening, glad to see all of you, ladies and gentlemen.
Just give us your name, Carolyn.
Carolyn Gansho. Or Carrie, as most people know me. I do not think it's adequate to email the representative.
Well, we're waiting for you. There you go. Is that all?
I'm hearing it.
Turn off your cell phone. Go ahead.
In the back. Email is going to sit for at least the next eight hours before somebody does anything about it. If I, if you email the representative at 10 o'clock at night, they aren't going to necessarily open their computer until 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. So somehow, I'm not sure about that. I would prefer that there was a phone call right then and there. I'd like some clarification. Down here on line 30 on page one, "The license shall continue in effect for a period of one year." Was that, Mr. Chandler, meant to be full and usage that they could take reservations anytime during that year for stays during that year?
Well, I'll go and answer just, we're not going to normally do questions and answers here, okay? But since it's a quick answer, we did cover that. That yes, it'll have all the same.
Could I hear it again, please?
Yeah, you'll get to use the same, same occupancy, same everything on the original license for that one year. The heirs would be able to carry it forward.
So they can book during that year?
Correct.
All right. I didn't see or hear anything in the requirements for the owner. I believe that they need to show adequate insurance that's fully paid for the next year. I thought, do not know or did not see any reference to our light ordinance. If we're talking about spas and swimming pools, we may be talking about bright spotlights. I would like to be sure that they don't shine in anybody else's eyes or don't shine on the street to hinder drivers. You make a requirement that spas should be drained. I want to know if you will insist on how they are drained. Some people simply pull the plug and it drains out on the ground. I would like to be sure that that is not the case, that the spas are drained into the sewer system. On the time for noise, I would like to see a compromise made at 9 o'clock. I realize that in the summertime, I know well that we have light until 10:30 at night. I used to find it very confusing. I couldn't get dinner until 10:30. But we have people in our neighborhood who go to bed at 8 o'clock at night. We try to be quieter for them. I also know somebody in my neighborhood is a working person because there are car doors slamming and cars starting at somewhere around 6:30 in the morning. That suggests to me, they may go to bed a little earlier. And just frivolous, 8 and 9 o'clock is the time for adult television. So I think a lot of people will go in the house. Could we compromise on that? I have a question about results appended to 1920-21. What will be the outcome of these implement administrative procedure document? I believe that representatives should answer their phone, their complaints, and take care of the complaint within the hour. That was the purpose many years ago when we said there needs to be a local representative. That was to ensure that problems were taken care of quickly.
All right, and I'm going to kind of wrap you up there, Carrie.
All right. That was, I'm back to, again, about the time should be 9 to 7. And that's, if we don't have VRDs in R1 zones, it will eliminate some of these problems and complaints from those zones.
Thank you. Would be the real unfortunate exemption. I like that. I'm going to remember that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right.
Robert Miller, I'm a homeowner in the city. And my concern is not about VRDs, but about noise control. I'm asking the council to consider moving this to a different agenda. I almost missed this because this was all framed under the VRD discussion. And yet, we all know this is a huge issue for many people. It affects everybody in every corner of the city, whether you live on the beach or you live next to the hospital or rest home or whatever. And I think there's, needs to be consideration for this. I would like to compliment, most people who are VID owner are just in the city. Most people are very cautious and aware of noise, and they're very good about it. But you always have those people that abuse it. And I've called the police department several times in my house, and they were very quick to respond. Excellent job that they did for. And I would not call unless I actually had an issue that was worth complaining about, not some minor issue. But the 7 to 10, was that, was that a, that's three hours difference. Was that based on any information? Has there been any problem with 7 o'clock? You know, it gets dark at 4:30 in the winter. Maybe 9 o'clock in the summer. I'm a Vietnam vet, and I have people in my household who are incapacitated, that are homebound. They have to sleep during the day. And there's other people like that. And, and it appears by framing it in the context of VRD, it's looking like we're, we're only concerned about VRD issues, which in effect affects us all. So I'm saying, there needs to be the 50 decibels, the 60 decibels, talking in the spa. But there are people, you know, there's, there's now nine places that sell marijuana in this town. We've had pot parties and beer parties. That's when it's a concern, is when people are just blatantly unconsiderate. And so, I'm not, 7 o'clock, you know, it's always worked for us, but why change it to 10? Just because of VRDs are, this is a huge issue that I'd like to see discussed in much broader range.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Edward Clemmons. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I've reviewed the revised ordinance that's being discussed. I returned from a business trip and saw the mailer that had come. And appreciate you sending that out to homeowners so that we would be aware. I know you've all got a pretty big process that you're going through, and I appreciate all your effort and all your hard work on this. I know it's been a fairly divisive topic over the past three or four years, or even probably longer than that. So I feel that you've all fair-mindedly tried to look at this, and you're trying to come up with areas of compromise. And for that, I'm grateful. I'd like to discuss, well, there's, let me back up. There's a couple of parts that I, I'm not real favorable of in the, in the new revised ordinance. But rather than get into those, I mean, other people have spoken about them. Others will follow me and speak about those. I'd like to discuss the police dispatch for VRD complaints. Councilor Anderson touched on that in some of his questions. I agreed with a lot of the questions he was asking about that earlier this evening. So thank you, sir, for playing right into my line of discussion tonight. When we, in the January council, there was a meeting in January regarding, I think it was a work meeting, talking about some of the crafting of new VRD ordinance. Actually, I guess it was a council meeting, because I was able to testify. I spoke about the idea and the concept of private enforcement. I'd like to touch on that again tonight. There's a company in Newport called TCB Security, and they have a division that's TCB Security VRD Patrol. I had brought up that issue back in January. They have enforcement of, excuse me, enforcement of VRDs, VRD rules dealing with parking, trash, noise, and occupancy in addition to other types of complaints that will come up. They have a 24/7 dispatch number, which is 541-547-2828. And they give a 30 to 45-minute response time anywhere in the city limits. They have three officers on duty nightly in Lincoln City. One of those officers is charged with going through all the homes, going past, you know, monitoring all the homes, just doing a drive-by and checking up on them. And then he's backed up by two other officers. So if they get a call for noise, trash, occupancy, parking, whatever it might be, they're there within 30 to 45 minutes. They already serve over 170 homes in Lincoln City. I believe some of the property management companies that have owners, principals behind me, employ this company to handle theirs in a very, I would say, would say, admirable way. They take it upon themselves to do this. I say, take the burden off the city for having the police department have to keep logs, and everyone keep logs, and have mandate that people hire this, a security company such as that, TCB or something along those lines, with the click of a button, when they pull up, they see what the parking is, the trash day, how many cars can be there, how many guests can be there the trash day, and the emergency contacts. They email a report right after they go there. So I'd be happy to give the website of that. I think you're aware of them. I think Lincoln County's already hired them-
Okay.
...for their VRD issue.
Just a quick question, since you seem familiar with them-
Sure.
...is, are they allowed access onto the property by their contract?
Onto the homeowner property?
Yeah. Do the, do the homeowner say, okay-
Yeah.
-if you're called, you can walk on?
Absolutely. And they can actually be sworn by the city to issue citations as well.
Okay, great. Goodness. Thank you. Whoop, whoop, sir.
Yes.
Did you say 541-547-2828?
541-574-2828. That's the dispatch number. That's not their headquarters. Mike Goff is the CEO. I've spoken with him just to find out about this, because one of the things I brought up, I think I mentioned in one of the work meetings that you were at, we all have to compromise. I think you all are doing a lot to try to compromise with VRD owners and find a happy medium. I'm thrilled to see that. And I think we have to put our money where our mouth is and say, take the burden off the city. It's like 20 bucks a month is probably the maximum it would be. If we can't afford $20 a month to take care of someone like Ms. Ganshaw's concern, we should not be having a VRD. And so I think that, that's just my two cents. Thanks for your time.
One more question.
I'm sorry.
Are these folks licensed by the DPSST?
That's a great question. I don't even know what the DPSST is, but I would-
Department of Public Safety and Training.
I would imagine our chief of police could answer that, because I think he's, he may or may not be.
We're getting big thumbs up.
They are? Okay.
Thank you for just raising your thumbs. Appreciate that. Thank you, man. All right. Patty Bell. Excuse me, Patty Bell. Oh, no, it's a Paul. You crossed your U. Paul Bell. I'm so sorry. It's okay. Bad eyes. Paul Bell.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments concerning the proposed ordinance amendments relating to vacation dwell, rental dwellings that will impact our property located at 6423 Northwest Logan Road. We appreciate the work the city manager and staff has done to-
Could I get you to stay near the mic? Stay near the microphone? Pull the mic around to you there. There you go. Thanks.
I'm going to find my place.
I'm sorry.
As a homeowner in, well, we appreciate the work the city manager and staff has done to bring the proposed ordinance amendments forward in a clear language. It's certainly an issue we've had in the past on other things. As a homeowner in Rhodes End, at this time it's difficult for us to understand what the impacts to our home well-being and community could be in conjunction to supporting or opposing these proposed ordinance amendments. It's impossible for us to know the complete impact of the efforts of the Lincoln City Council to further regulate and restrict vacation rental dwellings as there are potential land use planning changes and zoning changes ahead of us. The, these current ordinances, for the most part, are acceptable to us, requiring insect and rodent control measures. We think is extremely important. It only makes sense if you want to have people coming back to your homes. Ideally, for health and safety, the insect and rodent control measures would be required for all homeowners. The change in the quiet hours, we're actually, in the two years we've been under the license, we've never received a complaint from the folks staying at our home in regards to the seven o'clock PM time, which was kind of surprising. But, so we're fine with where you're going there. Establish timelines for VRD owners and local representatives to respond to complaints and specify follow-ups to the complaints. We're fine with that addition or update. Allow vacation dwelling licenses to stay in effect for up to a year after the death. We're fine with that. The really only unacceptable change for us is the maximum number of people allowed staying at the VRD. We have a three-bedroom home. We've been a VRD ourselves for over 20 years. We've always had, even before the annexation and licensing, an eight-person maximum, period. There's been no discussion arbitrarily, from our point of view, lower it to seven. We can't see the basis for that. You know, I guess the point I'd make, Chapter Two, Section 2.1, 2.2 of the City of Lincoln City Charter states pursuant to the city's charter authority, the council regulates vacation dwelling operations through program. But the bottom lines protect health and safety of vacationers, which we fully support. The city has provided no information as to what health and safety issues are improved by reducing the occupancy number at our home from eight to seven people. So I guess just again, in conclusion, thank you for the-
Thank you.
...opportunity for the input. If you have any questions, what I submitted has my phone number. Please be free to give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Mr. Smith, Ross Smith.
Hi, Ross Smith. Again, I want to repeat, thank you-
You have to raise the mic up a little bit, Ross, yourself.
Thank you for your service and your time. I had some words prepared, but I, since we only have three minutes, I wanted to show you this worksheet. I submitted it into the record today. I think I showed it to you guys last year. It's something I spent an awful lot of time on. It's basically all the different counties and cities on our coast and all the different categories of different, you know, things with our bed and breakfast and VRD rules. And one of the things, I can't, I don't know if the camera picks it up, but this red bar is Lincoln City. So, and all these different categories, like noise, which we are addressing, which is great, because every other city and county on our coast is 10 PM. So I understand people want to address that, but, you know, bring it lower. But, so, there's 23 places where Lincoln City does it. The only way, the only city or county on our coast, that Lincoln City does it a completely unique way. So we might want to look at, you know, simplifying our code. We have 35 pages or 40 pages of code, and the next most wordy city or county on our coast is like 14 pages. I think Tillamook's 14 pages. Newport's eight pages. And I think you talked about, let's keep it simple. I would love to see, you know, for example, Chris Minor, a wonderful city attorney and a former city attorney in Newport, did an analysis of some of the more non-understandable parts of our code. And I asked him, hey, could you explain this? And he spent a really long time, and he said, you know, I really can't understand this. And if he can't understand it, how's a regular person going to understand it? You know, he does that for a living, so. Oh, and also, these red things down here are things that are like legally questionable. Like, you know, somebody could challenge us on these things, like, you know, can we find a homeowner for the sins of a tenant? I don't think any other city on our coast does that. So if we start finding people for noise complaints or parking complaints when they didn't do it, it's their tenant, I don't, I don't think that's legal. We might want to look at that. I'm not sure. Oh, occupancy! That's a really good thing. This worksheet shows on this page, page two, you know, all the different cities and how they do occupancy. Most don't have a limit, but the ones that do, you have Tillamook at three, then Newport has two, Seaside has three, Bannon has three. So if you looked at, you know, what's the most common, the most common's three, which is, I think, a reasonable limit. And I think when you guys first started talking about occupancy limit, you discussed a four-person per bedroom limit. So I'm not sure how that got down to two, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ross. I appreciate the input. All right. Suzanne Young.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Young, and if I can take just a quick minute to ask a clarification question to Mr. Townsend. Several years ago, when I was down testifying before the council, the limit of 16 came up again, or was being talked about then as far as the number of occupancy. What you told me back then was that homes built before the 2010, I think it was July 2010 date, were grandfathered in, and that cap of 16 did not apply to those units. That's what we had clarified back in like 2012, 2013. Is that still correct?
Well, I'm going to interrupt, because this is not a time for the questions back and forth. So maybe you can call him, email him, and we can get them-
I just thought for the-
I know, I know, but with this many people and-
It's a pretty big clarification.
It is a big one, but, and I don't mean to-
Okay.
...not address it, but there's just too many people for a question and answer.
Well, moving forward, my brother and I, Mark Young and I, own a home here in Rhodes End. We bought it in 2010. It does currently sleep 22, although most average around 18 to 20. It is a home that's used for family reunions, church groups, you know, you name it, the same things that individuals have talked about. And what you do need to know is, I live in the Wilsonville area, and as one of the gentlemen spoke of in the back previously, the sign is already out for Lincoln City, saying tourists are not welcome. You asked about the Newports, you know, why was the $10 million difference in increase in revenue in, for tourism. It's because you have, we have a bad reputation down here for welcoming tourists to vacation homes in particular. It's out there. As I talk to individuals in the Portland area, who are a majority of the customers down in this region, people know about it. They know what's been going on. That's why the housing prices have not risen as quickly as other areas within the regions. So obviously, we're concerned about the occupancy. I do feel that it's a fair thing. I would think we'd want to keep those individuals coming down, the families that bring revenue to the, to the city. I just don't understand why would we want, I don't understand, I understand a cap. I understand maybe 20 per house or something. But I don't understand this two plus, two per bedroom plus one. And what I did, was pretty surprised to see was in the newspaper on June 22nd, it said, "When asked about the rationale for the controversial occupancy limit, Mr. Townsend said the two-plus-one proposal was suggested by a city council member." So it, I understand that that was the suggestion. I'm just not sure why we ended up at that number for an ordinance recommendation. It makes no sense. The other thing that's concerning to me is, I'm a single individual with no children, and you're telling me that I have to leave my home to a spouse or significant other. I can't leave it to my nephew without having an implication that he could not continue on. So anyway, I guess I, what I really wanted to say is that I think that it's a complete hindrance to the city. It's a complete hindrance to the tourist organization and to the people who support this city to have a limit of two per bedroom plus one. And I also think it is a hindrance to individuals who don't fit into that category of the spouse or domestic partner.
Thank you. That's a good point. Appreciate it. Doug Weldon.
I'm Doug Weldon. I live in Nell Scott. I'm in complete agreement with, I believe that the two-plus-one thing is onerous. It's going to hurt people, and I oppose it. Pretty much in agreement with the majority of the folks that have spoken here. I've heard about large vacation rentals, you know, family reunions, but we have small units at our place. And we just had a family of three with three little girls. And by this, by this standard, we won't be able to have those folks back to our place. And one of the things I really like about having a place like this is I get to meet people, and I, and I love listening to their stories and getting to know them. And I watched those little girls play on the beach, and, and they were having a great time. By this kind of a set of rules, we're just not going to be able to have those folks back. And so that's pretty much it. I'm okay with a call center. I think a call center would solve the problem. There's no need to have just layer after layer of restrictions on, on the vacation rental system here. The other thing I'd point out is that the noise issues are not just only exclusive to vacation rentals. There's monthly renters in this town that make huge amounts of noise and disrupt neighborhoods. And so I'd just like you to consider that as a, as a part of your deliberations as well.
Quick question, if I might. And this is for anyone who comes up subsequently is, since it was brought up about the call center, the private company that handles these. Would you be in favor of something like that?
I hadn't given it a whole lot of thought, but yeah, I'm in it off the top of my head. Without giving it too much thought, it would, it sounds okay to me. I think call center would, would really solve the problem. I think it would make the other neighbors happy. I think it would keep people in line, because they know they can be confronted. And, and just something like that, it's simple. And that's, that's really what we were looking for in the, in the whole process.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Kitty Pack.
Hello, my name is Kitty Pack, and I don't own a vacation rental. I own a business that cleans and runs the cleaning service for the vacation rentals. If you limit us on that, that pretty much is going to cut my business in half, and I have to let all my employees go. I'm going to have to start doing everything on my own, because, you know, I run a very small cleaning service. And I do a couple of the bigger houses in town. I get a certain amount of pay. I bring in the people to help me clean. And if you lower my pay down, because they'll be doing that when you guys cut, how many people can live and sleep in the house, I'll have to let my people go. And then I'm going to be out of business. And I do representative for them, too. And I want to know a little bit more about how you guys are going to notify me. I mean, email, yeah, that lady was saying at 10, 11 o'clock at night. I don't check my email after 10:00. And I won't know if there's a complaint until 8:00, 9:00 o'clock in the morning. And then you guys said I have to have 20, I have 20 days to respond, or two hours to respond to that complaint. Well, I won't know about it way after two hours.
I'm just so clear. You don't own a VRD?
No, I don't.
Then that's what that applies to, is-
Right, but I'm a representative for-
Oh, you're the representative, okay. Got it.
For them.
You're the representative for them.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much, Kitty. Appreciate it. Okay, Rob, I'm sorry. Hurt, 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 Hurt. Thank you so much. That's very kind of you.
Rob Hurtert.
Was it?
Hurtert.
Hurtor. Oh, that was easier than it looks. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for, for listening to us. I'm a VRD owner. My wife and I own a VRD in Rhodes End. I particularly wish that it had not happened that we're having this session tonight without having the information from the land use process ahead of time and finished through the planning commission and then here, so everyone could hear all the issues at once. Because there's three things that really bother me about this. One is, is the size limitation on the house, the occupancy. But the other two things have to do with the cap and the licensed non-transferability. And those two are intertwined. You can't separate them out. And I'll tell you why. Right, without getting into the caps, because I know that's land use, but right now, in Rhodes End, I could sell my house. A person could buy it. And they, even though I'm not transferring my license to them, they could operate that house as a VRD after they go through the nominal process of relicensing. And once there's a cap, and that becomes, people can't be guaranteed of doing that, I can no longer sell my house as a VRD. I don't understand the reason- I don't understand the reason for the licensed non-transferability. It, it seems like, I've been coming here since I was fifty-nine years old, listening to these things, I'm sixty-seven now, sixty-six now. And this non-transferability of license seems like it's something that's just a fact that hasn't ever been explored, like, we've always had a non-transferability of license issue. So, but let me go on to just mention briefly that my concern is the same as the other people have testified up here, about a really, really unmitigated burden on people who own large VRDs, and, and a change made to the occupancy that really seems outside the norm. The universal code that's been used before, I think, has worked well. I haven't heard or seen in the newspaper, any reports of big fires, egress issues, incidents, and I don't know if any of you have had the, had that experience, but I haven't seen anything reported to say that there's a safety issue that's causing that change from the universal code. So if there's a safety issue, I think we ought to ask it to be put on the table, and people should be able to look at it. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, very good reports done by Mr. Townsend on, very, very helpful information that were posted. I would just, I would just note that, maybe to look at the Page Six of the economic analysis, and revisit the group size for the vacation rentals. I think it says three-point-five now, I think that's probably way understated, and possibly by approaching two or three of the large vacation rental management companies, they might share with you what is a typical group size, and then those numbers could be presented back to the council in a total rather than a nightly form. Ninety bucks a day doesn't mean much, but if you add it up, it's just much money. So I think it'd be more helpful with council.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Let me skip, let me skip, let me skip. I don't remember who's next. All right, I'm gonna go, sorry if you were out of line here. Ken Seaton.
My name is Ken Seaton, and I came down to testify primarily about the Elks, but it was adjourned, so, removed forward, so we won't talk about that. But I really wanted to get into as well, the maximum number of people to stay in a house. Two plus one, I think, is absolutely ridiculous. And, and then you give no consideration for the square footage of the total house. You know, there could be some pretty large houses with pretty large bedrooms, but there's only two of them, and to limit it to five, so I really wish you'd reconsider that. I, I think most of us, looking at the white hair up there, probably slept two or three to a bedroom and took the hot water bottle to bed, because there was no heat upstairs. So, so I think when you, when you're having these kids and families come, it's ridiculous to say that you can't have four or five kids, you know, in, in a house, in a bedroom, or so on. So I think what we're, we're talking about is not having giant pot parties, and, and beer spilled out in the street, but I think when you're limiting this size, you better take that into consideration. And it's, to me, it's ridiculous to, to take it that small. And you're really causing, like the lady from Wilsonville testified, you're really talking about a reduction of value in property in Lincoln City. We haven't escalated, we haven't followed the trend. I've got properties scattered around the state, and we have not followed all the trends, and I think it's because of this vacation rental nonsense that we're into. So, and moving along, I just, will go the other way, on the quiet hours, I think ten is too long. I think it's too late for ten. I'm surrounded, I bet I can throw a rock, well, I used to be able to, probably and hit forty or fifty vacation rentals. I'm totally surrounded by vacation rentals, you know. And basically, it works out quite well, and I like it that way. Quite frankly, if I had a neighbor that started his outboard motor at one in the morning every night, I wouldn't like that too much. Here, if somebody's a problem, they go. So I would like to have you tone that down to nine. I think ten is just too late, particularly in the winter. We get a lot of, because of the, people come down on vacation, and they actually cut up and have a pretty good time, and so on, so you just, I kinda always try to cut a little slack, you know? And if they're having a good time, or throwing a firecracker or something over the cliff, you just kinda look the other way. I mean, give them a break. People come, and you just don't wanna pick at them. So I would like to see you cut that down to nine o'clock. And the last thing, I would like to see you up that to two years after a death. I think one year is kind of restrictive. You know, people do have problems in trying to move forward and all, and what, what are you trying to prove? What, what's the problem? You know, so why make a problem where there isn't one? So I would like to see that. But, but overall, and then, if I've got a minute or two, I'll get onto that hot tub thing. I just think that's a little bit onerous on people to have to change the water in the tub and do that, based on, on Lincoln City's prices, I understand it, they're gonna raise the price of water here shortly, so you can get into some pretty heavy things. And I'm gonna make one more comment if I can, and that's, because you asked the question, on having a, a management thing, that we'd be mandated to have a security outfit to look at the rentals? I don't think that's a good idea. I've had some experience with, with that type of a situation, and I don't think the city should be saying, "You gotta use ABC Company and pay them twenty bucks as part of a deal." I, I could see that that could be a little bit corruptive, or, or just not, not a good thing to, to lay, lay that burden on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it. And if you wanna speak on the, the other one later, that's fine, too, at, at the non-agenda part. About the Elks? No, we won't be bringing it up as an agenda, but if you wanna talk about it later, you can come back and talk, you know, at the end of the night.
Will there be discussion about it on the next week, or?
What date do we move that to?
On the eleventh, yes.
The eleventh.
Your Honor, that's, that's a land use matter, and a quasi-judicial matter at that, so-
Still be talking about it, though?
Yeah, but, at a future meeting, but outside of the hearing, it's not appropriate to give testimony to the council on a quasi-judicial matter.
It is possible to talk tonight, or it isn't?
I would recommend you not ex parte the council on a quasi-judicial land use appeal here.
A yield to the legal authority.
Thank you very much.
You're awesome, Kent. You're awesome. All right, all right. Okay. I don't know, are we still, Linda Bounds, were you gonna talk about the VRD? Linda?
She already testified at the beginning there.
I wanna hear more from Linda, I guess. And Paul's up and gone. Okay. Anyone who did not sign up, who wishes to speak? That lovely lady in the back. Can I get away with that, because she's my wife?
Counsel, Debbie Williams. I was just doing some statistics, and there are over a hundred and forty-two properties on HomeAway that serve over eleven people currently. There are a hundred and forty-five on VRBO, most of those are the same, but obviously VRBO has three more. There are forty-one properties in the city of Lincoln City that serve over sixteen guests I am not aware that the city has, but I haven't been here that long, only thirteen years, has ever enacted ordinances that would affect that large of a group of existing property owners without first having an economic impact study. That is a huge group of people with a lot of property, and it will hurt a lot of property owners. I know what will hurt me, to the point where we won't be able to keep our property. And frankly, I don't know who's gonna buy a home with nine bathrooms, that doesn't have a view. Just doesn't sound very appealing. We built our property for a specific purpose, which we told the city what we were doing when we did it. And we were built under the Boca Code, and we should be allowed to continue that, because we were built under the Boca Code. To that point, what commercial standards are we going to ask these residential properties to come to? What constitutes that commercial standard? Is it simply that they are zoned in commercial, or that they have commercial aspects to their construction? And if we are going to ask current properties to make those commercial improvements, to continue to do what they have been doing for the past several years, what are we gonna do about the hotels that are not zoned, or not, not zoned, but not built to that commercial code? Because there's quite a few hotels in this town that aren't sprinkled. So are we going to ask them to do the same improvements, to continue to serve who they have been serving, and the numbers that they have been serving? I would really ask yourself that question before we start impacting a hundred and forty-two homeowners, and expect to not have something happen. I've also looked at the statistics, looked at the calendars, this is not that hard to do, from a statistical standpoint, and the larger homes are the ones that are booked on the shoulder months. And that is because they mostly cater to family reunions, and just as an aside, our, our youngest son just got engaged yesterday, and she is in, she is one of sixteen children. And they're a wonderful family, and we would love to have them here for a wedding. We may not be able to do that because of our occupancy. That's all I'll say.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Gene?
James Gretton, Awin Beach Rentals. Excuse me. One thing concerns me, the implementation, all this thirty days after, because again, you might have, most homes are rented a year ahead of time, or at least half a year, so you're gonna have to call all those people up and tell them, "Now, you can't have as many people, you refund them their money." It's just a lot of burden on people, that I can see being a problem. I think nine o'clock's a reasonable time for quiet time, and, and for the practice deals, they should have, you should have no jets on after nine o'clock, 'cause people do talk louder to talk over the jets, so you could have a sign saying, "No jets on after nine o'clock." But I think the three-bedroom is, is a reasonable thing, but no stop-by guests. In other words, if you have a four-bedroom house, twelve is the maximum you can have in that house, period. No, you know, you can't have people, 'cause we don't allow stop-by guests, because think about it, if you have, you know, a maximum amount of people there, then they have twenty people stop by in a day for barbecue or something, that's a real disruption to the neighborhood. So if it was three per bedroom, that'd be twelve, that's the maximum people can be on that property at any time. I like that a lot better. And somehow, the large house deal's always been a, a really contentious point, and, and it includes a lot of people in it, and I've heard some people now getting upset with the big houses, and the people that have vacation rentals, 'cause they're causing all the problem, or that's what's perceived, but somehow, they need to pull out those twenty, those big houses, the big houses, and deal with them separate than with the regular houses, because that, we know they don't like, people don't like the large houses, and there should be some ruling that there's no large houses, obviously, from this point forward, but a lot of people have spent millions of dollars on these houses, I mean, more drive-by security, more whatever, but we need to deal with the ones that are here. Newport had the luxury of, they built a code from scratch, they had no vacation rentals in residential. We've got three-hundred or whatever, and some of them have been here for thirty, forty years. So it's just too much burden, this two-plus-one. I think three's reasonable, no stop-by guests, three per bedroom at any time on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Anyone else? Please? Sorry, that hand was up first, over here.
Wonderful comments tonight, thank you for your time. I'll keep mine very brief. I have a vacation rental that I've had for twenty years, and I co-own it with my parents, which I'm not sure, and maybe just for a point of conversation, what happens if I die? I mean, 'cause that's not my spouse, so I don't know how that would work. And also, we try to be, we try to be part of the community in that. I mean, I'm probably unique in the fact that we live here in town, but we use our vacation house with my parents quite often. I just spent Mother's Day with my mother and my daughter there, so I would like the opportunity to leave it to my daughter, and my parents would like that opportunity as well. And if there is a mortgage, which we currently have a very large one, she would have to sell it. And I think if you're wanting to create a community feeling, I think homes being owned generational is part of that. And so I think that should maybe be a discussion, that not just spouse, if you could transfer down a generation, that would be good. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone here? Please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kavanaugh, and my husband Dan and I own two vacation rentals here in Lincoln City. We love Lincoln City. We started com- sorry, this is a little-
Take a breath. It's all good.
We started coming here when my oldest was in third grade, and we fell in love with it, and we said, you know, we'd like to buy a place here. So we bought a little place, loved it even more, and then we found out, or decided that we'd like to build two vacation rentals, and we did that, and we have two vacation rentals, large vacation rentals, in the Rhodes End area. And I have to say that I care as much about Lincoln City as I think all of you do. I manage the vacation rentals myself, they're large rentals. I don't rent to anybody that I do not speak to personally. That is my motto. I don't want large groups that are gonna come in and give Lincoln City a bad reputation, or do harm to the, the local people. I want to add to the city as much as all of you do. So I do not rent to anybody without talking to them personally. Consequently, I develop a relationship with my customers, and they come back every single year. These are families where the grandparents call and they rent it, they come for family reunions, they come, even quilters groups. These are eighteen ladies who sit and quilt all day. And as I'm sitting back there, I'm thinking, it suddenly came to me, that a lot of the people that I get are actually people who call me, and they say, "You know what? We grew up there, our mother is terminally ill, and we want to come to Lincoln City, and either have a memorial service for her, or spread her ashes." I have somebody right now, two groups that are coming, one because a child is terminally ill, and one because a mother is, and I have to call them and say, "I'm sorry, you can't come to Lincoln City," because they won't allow more, any people more than eleven in my house. So I'm sorry, you're gonna have to tell your young son that he's not gonna be able to come here. I have people right now that come from all over the United States, and they're telling me how much they love to come to Lincoln City. But on the other hand, they have also heard negative things, and they're saying, "Jennifer, explain to us, what is going on down there?" I don't know what to tell them. They wanna come to the city, they love it, they go on and on about how wonderful it is, but they're starting to question the hospitality of Lincoln City, and I don't know what to tell them. And I'll mention to you, we have a large family, my husband has twelve siblings. We can't even bring our own family now? I have four kids, my son's getting married, we've enjoyed entertaining, you know, future in-laws. We wouldn't be able to do that now. So I just, I guess I would like to just close really quickly and say, "I am willing to sit down with anybody in this room, and try to solve this, and say, 'What can I do?'" I, I have gone around to all my neighbors in Lincoln, in the Rhodes End area, and said, "You know, call me if there's a problem. Here's my name, here's my number. I wanna, I wanna do what I can. I'm willing to sit down with anybody, and let's see if we can come to an agreement." I could go on and on, but anyway, in a nutshell, thank you very much, and I hope you'll reconsider.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Oh, look, the hand in the back got up first. Nope, nope, well, okay, he's standing here. I'm not gonna, wait, oh, now we're back to that.
Well, thank you. I, I wasn't planning on speaking at all, um-
Just give us your name, please.
I'm sorry, I'm David Knoll. I've had a house here in Lincoln City for about twenty-four years. I remember coming to Lincoln City when I was first married, thirty-five years ago, with my wife. We stayed at the Esther Lee, loved it, it was just, you know, it was fabulous. And as we had kids, we took the kids to the Esther Lee, and, and the Inn and Spanish Head, and it worked. it worked. It really worked well until the kids got to be about 10. And when they got to be about 10, they wanted to bring a friend and grandma and grandpa, and the Esther Lee would not work for us anymore. And that's the first time that we decided to rent a beach house. And in the process of renting the beach house, we loved it so much, we decided we were going to have one of our own. And so we started the process of building it, and we almost immediately started renting it to friends and neighbors that we knew, and, you know, the rest is history. The thing that is difficult for me, and I know you guys have struggled with trying to come up with a way of making this all work, the numbers is the area that I really struggle with. Two per bedroom plus one would not work for us. We are allowed currently to have 16, and we limit it to 14 just because 14 is a better fit for the house than the maximum that we could have. We have, we have been renting to families who have spent Christmas in Lincoln City for 20 years. We have people that have come down for Thanksgiving for over 20 years. We rent to a family that if I were to mention their name, every person in this room would know this particular person who has served in Oregon for many, many years. When I told him, very good likelihood, I wouldn't be able to rent to him any longer, he was extremely disappointed and said, "Well, we will simply go to the second-most favorite house that we, we rent, and that's not in Lincoln City." I would hate to lose that valued member of Oregon just because of some of the things that are in front of you. I appreciate you giving me a chance to, to speak, and I encourage you to really consider the numbers, the two-plus-one, very seriously. The rest of it, I think, is really sensible, and I'm all for making the community around my house just a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, David. Very nice. And we have...
Hello, my name is Dan Kavanaugh, and I'm lucky enough to be married to that emotional gal that was just up here a little bit ago. And we are very proud of what we have done in Lincoln City. My family is an Oregon Trail family. They arrived here in 1852. I've been coming to the Oregon coast since I was born in 1958. Come from a large family of 12. We have put our life savings into two homes in Rhodes End. Part of why she was so emotional, I am too. We built them ground up. We took down two dilapidated oceanfront homes that we paid a lot of money for, and we rebuilt. And we built homes that were six bedrooms. They've now been cut to five. If we did anything, we designed a gorgeous home. If you read the comments that we get on our home, you just couldn't believe it, how they feel about that home. It was built as, both homes built as vacation rental homes. We provided a lot of jobs. We pay a lot of taxes. Pay way more property taxes now than the dilapidated house did that we tore down. We're passionate about the Oregon coast. We're passionate about Lincoln City. We want to be here. My wife and I would like to retire here. And you're going to take it away because we can't afford to keep the homes. There's no concept. And what you're going to, what you're going to do in the next one after this one, the number of days a year will shut us down so fast you can't see straight. So of the two that are on here, the two that would kill us, and at least what we're talking about tonight, is a two-plus-one. These are 3,600 square foot homes we own. They were built to current code. We did everything right, and we could only put 11 people in there? I don't have any problem with regulation. Like my wife said, we'll sit down with anybody. We manage, I'm the plumber, I'm the electrician, I'm the carpenter, and she manages. These houses are, we watch them carefully. We know every one of our neighbors. We've never had a call. We've never had a call. So I think we should just regulate to the point of making Lincoln City a great place. The tax revenue, the jobs that would be lost by shutting these kinds of places down, the complete implosion of at least the Kavanaugh family, we go down. We've got everything we own in these things. We've got millions of dollars in two homes. And I don't know what they'd be worth after this. I talked to Dennis Regan earlier today, trying to figure out what they might be if all of a sudden we've got to sell them. We rent them, it would be a 90% cut in our revenue. And our revenue is significant, but of course, we paid a great deal for these homes. All the rest of everything on here is okay, but God forbid if you ever tell me I can't give this home to our four incredible kids. God forbid. It would just be unjust, absolutely unjust. How could such a thing happen? I don't know.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I guess I should go through this, but I'm really dying to ask for a break. How's anyone? Oh, you got, John, come forward. Still dying for a break. No change, anything?
Good evening. John Oxenholt, Beachfront Rentals, Meredith Lodging. We now manage over 200 homes, and combined with our affiliate, affiliated companies, have 90 employees, all of which earn over the Lincoln City median income. And, you know, in fact, our starting wage, even though one of the out-of-town companies got credit for it in the local press, we've long been starting our housekeepers out at a starting wage of $15 an hour. And I don't see any of that to brag at all. If I had wanted to do that, I guess I would have sent out a press release to the paper. I say that for two reasons. One, because I want you to know that when I speak, I also am speaking on behalf of our 200 homeowners that I have a responsibility to speak for. We've never sort of tried to stir the pot with them or make things. We always try to keep them informed and encourage them to submit comments to you guys. I'm sure that you guys have received some letters from them. But when I do speak, it is not only for myself, it's also for a lot of our homeowners. And as far as the employees, I think it's great that there's more than one local company that's able to pay $15 an hour as a starting wage, not an ending wage, but a starting wage. And it's great that this industry allows for that in this town because I think that's very important, especially in a resort and tourist economy such as we have here. I think that you guys have all heard me speak a few different times, so you can probably guess what some of my points might be. You might want to grab your pen and paper because there might be something new that may come up here. But it's really, I mean, my three big points are occupancy. We view those large sleeper homes as a real asset. I think it's a different, to me, I think it's a different product type than some of the other towns may offer. And I think that's a good thing. As a resort town, I think we should, you know, really embrace the lodging nature and diversity in lodging that we have here, especially as the sharing economy grows. I mean, it's kind of like, that's, that's a lot of what's driving some of these changes is, you know, the sharing economy is such a growing part of every segment, whether it's small cities or big cities. And then we're faced kind of double with that just because of the resort nature of our local economy. So occupancy, you know, I much prefer a standard that's based on square footage, something that's, you know, more similar to maybe a Fort Lauderdale model. If that's not possible, you know, I prefer a haircut rather than what might, what some have termed, you know, more of a scalping. And when I say haircut, I think, you know, maybe consider some grandfathering, maybe look at Rhodes End a little bit differently, maybe look at some of the ones that have been built prior to building code changes in 2010. But at least consider, and if, and if you can't do that, then at least, as I think one of the previous speakers indicated, maybe look at phasing any changes in over a year. Just because I can attest to the fact that the large sleeper homes in particular, because they are more multi-generational families, they take a little more planning and they tend to book up in advance. The other two sort of big points...
Are you wrapping up pretty quick?
That I have, I sure can, are the overall caps and landscaping, which I, shockingly, I missed some of the other speakers, but I didn't hear that. But I'd like to, like to see that looked at again. I really do applaud you guys for, I think this has been such an open process. I think that's been really, really helpful for me, and I appreciate, you know, our city manager, as well as the rest of you, arranging for so much public input. And I think there's a lot of good things in here, and I do think that regulation is a, is a good thing.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, just a thing. Okay. Anyone else? Someone coming forward? Erin.
Just wanted to add a couple of things, Erin Linfoot.
Yeah, pull the mic up there, Erin, would you? It goes like this, too.
Never had the problem of being totally talked to quietly, just like you, I guess. I just want to hit a couple of things. I spent the weekend looking through some of the economic studies. I appreciate that. But I like data, so it's kind of fun to be able to read through it. It's not the most exciting read sometimes, but it's fun to know what's going on. Slow down.
No, can you tell us your name, please? I don't think...
Oh, Erin Linfoot?
Thank you.
Sorry. And just some of the things that I was reading through was focusing more on the tourism dollar side, and I just wanted to bring those up. But in part of the study, you know, the overnight camping was also a lump of VRDs, which there was a mention about how that makes it more challenging to see some of the numbers. So just to reemphasize that. It lumped with that in saying the average group size is 3.3 people, which we see a significantly higher number, especially in the large sleepers. And there was an assumption that said VRD guests might spend less than hotel or motels. And I think some of those things are definitely contrary to what we're seeing. I mean, hotels get continental breakfast and everything, right? But, you know, also, the average stay for us is well in excess of 3.5 nights, which is 1.6 higher than the average that was stated on the economic study. You know, being a sharing economy, there's a lot of stuff that happens with our staff, as John mentioned, with over 90 just in the local area, and making a decent wage. They spend a lot of money around here. And we're having to do analyses now to see what's our cost-cutting going to be. What do we have to tell some of these people who are coming in saying, "Hey, I want full-time employment. I'm tired of getting 10 bucks an hour at a hotel. I want to make some good money. What can you give me?" I promise you, I can give you full time. Can I? I can't. You know, one of the things that was mentioned tonight is passing the property on to their kids, and I just got to think, thinking a little bit, I don't own vacation rentals, but I own long-term rentals. And if, who knows what the legislation could be like when my kids come of age. But if someone told me I couldn't give what I'm doing right now for my kids, I would have a huge issue for that. I'm doing it for my kids, for their future. And I just really want you guys to take a look. The big one for us tonight, for me, is the occupancy piece that has a rippling effect. Based on the own economic study, over 50% of our properties sleep 12 or more people. That's not to mention what would happen for a two-bedroom that's now limited to five. Thank you, guys, for your time and the efforts you're putting in.
Thank you, Erin. Sure appreciate it.
Thanks, Sharon.
Anyone else? Do I see a hand up? Yes, okay. Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Kathy Bassett. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I thought I would come forward. The Kavanagh's made a very good point that also is my point. My husband and I bought one of the larger homes in Lincoln City in 2013. We are approved to sleep 23, but we choose to limit it to 18 people. And the proposed regulations are going to devastate us as well. I'm sure many of the property owners here that buy these expensive homes cannot afford to not rent them. Okay.
Kathy, can I have you speak up just a little bit or get closer to the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so in addition to the land use that we're going to talk about next time, the occupancy restrictions affect us a lot because our home is five bedrooms. Just one of my bedrooms is probably two times the size of a hotel room, and having two people or three people in that room is a waste of space. And I think that you should consider the square footage as opposed to the number of The point that Erin just made about the passage at death is a very important issue for us. We've worked hard to be able to afford this home, and we have several other businesses, and we want to pass those on to our children as well. They deserve to inherit what we have worked hard to make a living for ourselves, and we would like to pass that on to our children and our grandchildren. It affects my retirement if you limit my ability to rent the house to a smaller number of people because I'm not competitive anymore. There's a lot of homes in Lincoln City that can sleep 14 people, 10 people. My home is one of the few that can sleep 18. And I have a higher mortgage. I can charge a higher rent because it is a larger home. And if you're making it an equal playing field where we can all only rent to 10 to 12, 14 people, I don't have any advantage, and I would have to lower my rates, which would not allow me to pay my mortgage. And I think that you should also consider what it does to the business owners in this town. Every person that comes to my home spends money at the grocery store, the gas station, the outlet malls, many different places, and it improves the economy here for everybody. And if my occupants go away, it's going to reduce their business as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it so much. Anybody else? Going, going, gone. All right. Thank you all so much for your time. Any comment from representatives of public agencies? Thank you. If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the record for this matter?
This is just comments. It's not really a public hearing.
Oh, there you go.
Mayor, can I, can I suggest that the record be kept open? If you do have, if you have questions of staff that you want more information on, we'll be able to bring that back, and it would be in the record then.
Thank you. I would appreciate the record staying open. And I don't think it'd be wrong to have another night of public comment for people who couldn't get here. But that's just me. Pleasure to the council.
I move that we keep the record open, Your Honor.
It's not a public hearing, so there is no record, or there's a record, but not the public hearing record? Am I mistaken here?
Your Honor, this is a, not a land use hearing. So most ordinances, for example, we have first reading, we, sometimes we postpone second reading and allow people to submit comments on the ordinances up to the Wednesday before the council meeting. So really, there's no need to leave the record open. You're not really closing it anyway. So I think we're, we're safe if you just want to decide whether or not you want to talk about this tonight or postpone it to another night to...
When you say "talk about it," what do you mean "talk about it"?
Well, if you have any further questions or direction for staff...
Okay, that's great. Yeah, good. Good. Okay, good.
I would retract my motion in that case.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dick, for jumping in there. It's a confusing little mess up here. All right, then, we are at... What? This is a very good question.
So what, what is the action from here? Clearly, further discussion from council and based on what we've heard and our own suggestions from what we've heard.
Do you want me to answer that?
Please, yes.
And I'll also ask Mr. Appicello and Mr. Townsend to jump in if needed, to jump in if needed on this. So you do have an ordinance before you, okay? If there are no changes, that would be brought back to you for your first and second readings and to go forward. If there is additional information, additional things that you would want us to consider, it would be based upon what you've heard or what you feel after you have read it, we can bring back that information to you and for your further consideration. Okay, with that information, then it's time to pepper the staff with what you want.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a bit confused, which ordinance are you referring to?
FF.
That's not a numbered ordinance that we were considering tonight according to our agenda.
That's what you received public comment on?
It's public comment, not a public hearing, so we can't do, we couldn't pass an ordinance if we're not going to have a public hearing.
We do not, this is not a land use ordinance, so it requires no public hearing, but we do not have an ordinance before you, such as we would under the charter, you have to have an ordinance before you and then for first reading. You have not been presented an ordinance for first reading, you've been presented only with a draft ordinance, and you solicited public comment. So at this point, you would just, if you like what you've looked at, you've heard the comments, you could direct us to return with an ordinance for first reading with changes, or you can simply indicate that you'd like to take under consideration the comments and set this over and give staff direction in a later meeting.
That's what was confusing me, because I wasn't seeing an ordinance before us to talk and do anything about it, because there obviously are some very issues, let's put it that way. There are a number of issues with FF that I think need to be responded to and investigated. I am concerned regarding the transfer of, you know, of property. I thought when we first discussed that, that was only in one zone, and then, and that was when we were talking about it being a non-conforming use, and I'm not sure how it got warbled into this. The other one is, very honestly, is the occupancy limit. I really think we need to be looking at that a little bit more, a little bit more clarif- more clarification. The motel I work for, place where I work for, it has 640 square feet, and we can't, if they have three beds, can allow up to six people, seven if one of them, or eight, you know, are under the age of nine months, which is what our cutoff happens to be for, we're not counting. But that's about 100 square feet per person, well, based on that, if you're in one of these homes and you have, I don't know, empty, empty thousand square feet, you could pack them in. So, I mean, I'm not sure that that standard of two per bedroom plus one for the whole property, which is kind of confusing in itself, is actually, that seems to be highly restrictive. If you have a bedroom that can have two queen beds or two king beds, you're saying, sorry, you can only have two people plus one on the entire rest of your property, if that's your only bedroom, when in fact you could have four people plus one, because you've got two beds. Certainly could sleep up to two people. So, I think that there are some real things that need to be worked out, and so rather than coming back with a, an ordinance for passage, I would like to see some work done on those sections specifically, and then come back to us and form more discussion.
Well, then maybe that would be helpful if we kind of polled each member here to say, if you're okay with the vector, let's move on, you know, we're done with that part, if we're good with the spa, we're good with that, or let's say no, here's what I want, is that satisfactory? Do you want to just go down the line and-
Well, given the time and the other agenda items, I'm wondering if, I think going through it like you're suggesting is a good idea, and knock it out, because I'm hearing Counselor Ryan say he's got more discussion, looking for clarity, and maybe the thing we do is adjourn this for a, now that we've had testimony, for another council meeting and carve off more time for this.
I like that idea.
So we can absorb some of the notes and testimony that we've had.
Right, I agree with that.
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay, so then the direction is we're just going to adjourn this and carry it over?
If you just direct staff to give us a meeting date, maybe we'll just, you know, ask for, it's not advertised public hearing, but you can just direct us to come back at a date certain for-
Oh, looking to shake his head there.
Nope, if you don't have any, if you don't have any changes that you want us to work on at this point, then what I would suggest is bring it back on the 11th, your next meeting.
All right, we're not overloaded?
You're always overloaded. You're not going to find a time when you're not overloaded.
Good point. Okay, so we'll bring this back on the 11th, does that work for everyone?
I'm sorry, I'm hearing two different things. Mr. Townsend, are Chandler, sorry, are you saying that if we aren't voicing anything specific right now, that you're going to bring back an ordinance for a public hearing on the 11th? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, what will come back is just what you have before you now, it will not be a first or second reading, it will be a continuation of this discussion for you to give us direction on what you would like to do.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because-
Okay, so could you have something to say, Kip, about that?
I thought I heard you say-
Okay, so that works, 11th.
Yes, but one more thing to point out, we would be bringing this back for a discussion, but not for additional public comments.
Would we take emails and letters?
Yeah, we still have the, we still have vrd@lincolncity.org, that's open, I don't see any reason why we could not continue to take information from people.
I can live with that, yeah, okay, seeing that's, okay, so we're going to do that. Where was I at? I'm losing it, I know I want to break. Yeah, so that'll get, so folks, that's what we're going to do, is this will carry over to our next meeting. I want to thank you all for your courtesy and your patience in this, I know it's, it touches close to home for a lot of people, you know, I heard a lot of stories about family, and it didn't go unrecognized, so thank you very much for that, thank you for your civility, and thank you for being patient with us as we work through this, and we hope we work out something that works well for Lincoln City and the families and visitors. If there's no objection, could we take 10? That we're free before we launch in anything?
Take a full 10 minutes?
Well, you can have 12 if you want. On this matter, yeah. Verbal, verbal.
No, no.
You can still write in, no?
What we're saying is that for the next meeting, we would not have public comment.
Right, for the next meeting, no public comment. Oh, look at that pouty lip. You can still submit stuff in writing, okay? We're just not going to have another one of these for people coming up. Yes, VRD website's good, okay, so, that's it, can we take 10? Good, we're going to take 10, and thank you all, folks, appreciate it. Oh, plaster to the chair.
Are the mics off there?
Yes, they're off. Thank you.
Good.
Mics are on.
Thank you, microphones are on. Paper, I don't have much to do on this meeting. What a match. I don't have much to do on this meeting.
Oh, Richard.
We've got lots of notes, though.
That's my home, either.
And thank you again for the scripts, I always appreciate them very much. Damn, that's a lot of paper. I have a funeral for all the trees. Uh, I don't need any of that, I don't need any of that. Please. All these, rather than you, you could if you want to read the whole thing, but you can say, okay, we're ready to do this. It's you, you're on. Love it. So, folks, if you're leaving, get out of here, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna get started with our meeting. Was that wrong to say, I apologize? All right, and we're dismissing Kip and... It already feels like Thursday. It does. Uh, tha- that was great, though. Congratulations to everyone getting through that, it was not easy for a lot of people, and I appreciated the, again, this ability, it was terrific. Okay, I guess we can start without Kip. With that door closed behind us, all right, we are back in session. Um, we're gonna go to ordinances, uh, we're at ordinance 2016 dash one zero, Mr. Appicello.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2016 dash ten, and I have only one change in this ordinance. Um, and that's because, uh, I've created a second ordinance, uh, which is 2016 dash fifteen to cover this particular issue. So, the title would be amended to strike the words repealing LCMC Chapter 3.26, which was actually a, a mistake, it should've said 3.28. Um, with that, reading that change and with the, uh, statement that the Budget Committee actually recommended approval of this ordinance and referral of the matter to the, uh, people for the November election. Um, I will, I'll conduct the second reading, um, this is second reading of ordinance 2016 dash ten. An ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, LCMC Title III Revenue and Finance, adding a new Chapter 3.26 Recreational Marijuana Taxation, imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer, and referring the ordinance to the voters. Again, looking for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance, subject to the approval of the voters.
So move. Second, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I do, oh, this, do I have, do I have to have roll call on this one? Yeah, okay, all this, all right, uh, roll call, please.
Ward.
Yes or no, Kip?
Yes, absolutely.
That's his answer.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 2016-12. Uh, your honor, this is second reading of, uh, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City, well, before I actually conducted the reading. Um, council conducted first reading, uh, on this ordinance and gave direction to me to bring back some, uh, alternative language, which, um, there are two ordinances in the packet. One is the ordinance that you had at first reading, and then the second ordinance is with some suggested changes. Um, I, assuming the council would desire the suggested changes, I can read those changes now, or you can, uh, say, no, we don't want any changes, and I won't read them. But, uh, so if, if there's a interest in the changes, and the option was, the directions, the suggestion from council was, could we perhaps get rid of the deposit requirement and simply establish a fee? And so the, what we did was, we cleaned up the ordinance to simply require a fee for the review of prospective petitions. And then, if they come back with the signatures, there is a fee for the time excluding the county, I took reference to the county out of it. Um, and so just for the staff's review of the intervening steps that would have to occur. And so the first fee is as before, um, there were no changes to those fees. Uh, and the second fee is $500 instead of the $1,000 deposit. So, that, we figured if we took the county reimbursement to the county out of it, $500 would fairly reflect the staff time that would, would be incurred, uh, for review of and drafting of the ballot title and explanatory statement and consideration of such matters by the council, as well as the processing of the, uh, at least the city recorder's time in processing the initiative petition signature sheets and getting those transmitted to the county. Um, and we thought that the $500 fee would be appropriate. If you're interested in that fee, I, I think the council communication suggested that you ask the public if they would like to comment on the $500, uh, fee, because the last time it was here, it was a $1,000 deposit, so because we've changed it slightly, um, I think you should at least ask if any member of the public is interested in commenting on that. Um, again, if you're, if you would like, I will read the changes that are highlighted in yellow, we have to if we're gonna adopt it with the changes. Uh, if not, we can proceed with the second reading on the ordinance without the change.
Well, I wanna muddy the waters just a little bit, that's if we have enough already. Uh, one thing that concerns me, and this has brought to my attention, is the initiation of the ballot, uh, and, and the beginning of the timeframe. So, if someone brings in, correct my language if I'm using it wrong, someone brings in and a, uh, walk me through, what's the first thing you're gonna bring in?
Perspective petition.
A perspective petition, the clock starts, is that correct?
Yes.
So, they've got 75 days whether it's approved or not, and then this is my concern is, they, they submit it, it's not approved, yet the clock still keeps ticking, they revise it, the clock keeps ticking. And I'm just concerned that we're not giving them a fair amount of time based on what is actually gonna go forward.
Well, in terms of the 18, uh, perspective petitions that we did deal with, the, the clock restarts every time because there's a determination by the city elections officer um, on that perspective petition, so there were three approvals and 15 rejections, actually, I think one might've been withdrawn, so there could've been 14. Um, and each time that they submitted, it triggered, uh, five days for the city elections officer to make the constitutional determination. When, if she decides against it, sorry, this is not meeting the requirements of constitutional review, that time didn't start.
Okay.
Yeah, but once, it, the time that actually starts when they get the okay.
All right, that was my, what I wanted to clarify.
There were three that were okayed, and, uh, she transmits them to me and says, okay, now you have five days to write the ballot title. And of course, there's no fee or anything for that work either, um, but that's where the second fee would come in and recapture some of the staff time in doing the ballot title expla- explanation and as well as explanatory statement, which you then have to...
Right, and I, I wasn't really concerned about that case in particular.
The timeframe would start...
If we're gonna start charging.
When, after they get the approval letter from the city elections officer, not when they submit the perspective petition.
Okay.
It's when they get the perspective petition approved for...
And you're still recommending the 75 days?
Um, actually, the council communication, the, the ordinance as presented does not, um, actually have the language in the ordinance. But I did write the or, the language and place it in the council communication. So, if the council would like...
It's right there, I'm sorry.
To do it at this meeting, I can read that language if, in addition to all the other language I have to read.
I'm good with what you have, I'm sorry, I did not see, you have the 100.
Or, or the council could recommend that I bring back a separate ordinance to address that timing issue. Because you may have more discussion about that than the last time where you were talking about fee versus deposit. So, before I do the second reading, is anyone suggest that I read the changes, or?
I would, I would appreciate that.
As would I.
Okay, I will, uh, proceed with reading the changes, and then after the changes are read, I'll do the second reading. Apologize, I, I should've printed this out as I'm scrolling through my computer here. Uh, the first change is in the title, it would now read, "An ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.24 Initiative and Referendum Procedures, Adding a new section 1.24025 to authorize fees." The words "a deposit requirement" and would be stricken from what was read at first reading. Uh, in the whereas clause on page two, the first whereas clause would read, "Whereas the city of Lincoln City has, in a short period of time, beginning in December 2015, received and processed 18 prospective initia- initiative petitions with no fees charged," and second whereas clause would be revised to read, "It is reasonable to establish municipal code authority for the imposition by council of reasonable processing fees to deter misuse of the initiative and referendum process." Again, there are the words, uh, "and a reasonable deposit for costs" is removed, given the council's suggestion. Um, in Section One, in the new text, uh, or rather, in the existing code, uh, the words under 124025 "deposit" and would be removed, and the section would then only read 124025 "processing fees." Uh, paragraph A would, uh, include, actually, I believe this was already in there, "Processing fees," the first sentence, would read, "Any person or persons, organization or organizations presenting or offering any prospective initiative petition or referendum for review." Again, I believe that was already in the ordinance, it's just mistakenly highlighted. Um, under paragraph B, the, uh, the word "deposit" would be stricken, and the new section would, uh, title would read, "Fees Required with Final Filing." The section would read, "Any person or persons, organization or organizations presenting or offering any initiative or referendum petition for final filing with signatures for review shall, at the time of such filing, submit to the city elections officer a non-refundable processing fee for costs." The fee, striking the word "deposit," shall be either cash or a certified check made to the order of the city of Lincoln City, and the initial fee shall be set as, at the sum of $500, uh, changing that from what was presented before, a thousand dollars. That said, fee, um, sum shall be adjusted by the ci- may be adjusted by the city council by resolution. And then, the previous section, C, relating to, uh, deposit is stricken, and I'll read the stricken language, "Application or refund of deposit." "The deposit shall be held by the city elections officer until after the election, and in the case of initiative petition, if the proposed measure is defeated at such election, the entire cost of processing the measure and holding the election shall be paid from such deposit. In the case of referendum, if the referred ordinance is nevertheless enacted by the people, the entire cost of processing the referendum and holding the election shall be paid from such deposit. If any balance remains after the payment of such expenses, such balance shall be returned to the proposer of any such initiative or referendum. In the event that any such initiative measure is enacted or, or referred ordinance is defeated at the election held thereon, the entire amount of such deposit shall be returned to the proposer of such initiative or referendum, and the expenses of such election shall be paid by the city. In the case when the deposit is applied, the city may reimburse the county or, for county costs associated with initiative, city initiatives or referendum, including but not limited to signature verification costs, notwithstanding any other provision. To the contrary, the deposit for the cities, for the special election or election to be held in an odd numbered year shall be three times the deposit required other, otherwise required." Again, that language is all stricken and removed, making the ordinance less complicated. Uh, subsection D is amended to, to simply state, "The fees, the fee provisions are expressly made for the purpose of preventing depleting of city resources and funds by elections on matters which, in which the public is not interested and which have no merit." Again, the words "and deposit" is, are stricken. Uh, otherwise, the only other...
Dr. Appicello, I, I believe that paragraph D should be changed to paragraph C.
Yes, indeed. Um, paragraph, uh, D is a mistake, it should read paragraph C. Um, and then, and the last, uh, just before the pass and adopted language, it's under Section Six. "The foregoing ordinance was distinctly read by title only in accordance with Chapter Nine, nine, Section 9.2, the city of Lincoln City Charter, on the 13th day of June 2016, first reading, and on the 27th day of June 2016, with changes fully read into the record, and then the 27th date would be added as well." Um, so I'll proceed, and I'll actually just read the title, and, um...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do it to you again, I got a question. Uh, it's for Mr. Chandler. Um, we're saying we can only take cash or a check or certified check, do we, will there never be an option for any other payment form that we might wanna just throw in there and give the city an option to take? Do we have to do this all over again? Ask Debbie Allen to help me on that one. You know, if in 10 years we have the technology to take a debit card... Do we can think of taking credit cards, uh? We do, we do take credit cards, but I don't know if that's an option that... Is there a way to put in something that, or means accepted by the city or something or other?
Um, paragraph B could, uh, the sentence you're referring to could be revised to say, "The fee shall be either cash or certified check or other payment acceptable to the city finance director."
Yeah. You just don't wanna pay that processing fee, I know.
So, if you were to actually change this, and I, I mean, clear, if you're actually going to prepare the changes, the sentence would read as follows. And I lost it. Certified check went away. "The fee shall be either cash or a certified check made to the order of the city of Lincoln City or other payment acceptable to the city finance director, and the initial fee shall be set at the sum of $500. That said, fee, sum may be adjusted by the city council by resolution." If that is an acceptable change, then, um, I'll read the title.
Again, in general.
Before you do that, uh, Mr. Appicello, could you, um, read the new section two regarding the filing requirements for the initiative petitions?
Uh, there is a section two of the ordinance, which is findings adopted, um, so I'm not sure which section you're referring to.
1.24.030, filing requirements for initiative petitions.
Uh, I believe that's in the council communication. And I, that's a separate issue of, from the deposit issue, um, so if the, if you'd like, I will read that, if the council wants to adopt that. Um, I did not incorporate that actual language into the draft ordinance, so I'll...
Would you rather wait?
Um, it's up to council, um, if, I'll tell you what, I'll read it, and then if you want to include that in your motion, you may. Um, section 1.24.030, filing requirements for initiative petitions. And this has to do with the timing, as was discussed at the last meeting. "An initiative petition relating to a city measure must be filed with the city elections officer, not later than the 100th day after the date of the prospective petition, after the date the prospective petition was filed with the city elections officer. The city elections officer shall not accept petition submitted later than the 100th day after the date the prospective petition was filed with the city elections officer." That would strike the words 75th. And to correct myself from earlier, your honor, I, the reading that language, I believe it's the day the prospective petition is filed that we start counting, so it's not the day it's approved, so I was, would be five days off, uh, 'cause we only have five, we have five days to review it.
But it still holds true that it would, if it wasn't approved, you refile, it starts over again?
Yes.
After the five days, okay.
So, this would affect a change of, obviously, 25 days to the length.
One more request, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Regarding, uh, asking for public comment?
Oh, yeah, but is now, any public comment?
This would be on the change from the $1,000 deposit to the $500 non-refundable fee.
I don't see no one.
Thank you. Your honor, counsel, so this is second reading. Sorry. This is second reading of ordinance 2016 dash 12, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.24 Initiative and Referendum Procedures, adding new section 1.24025 to authorize a deposit, I'm sorry, to authorize fees, and I, I guess I'd have to add, and amending section 1.24.030, if, uh, filing requirements, if in fact you choose to add that, or include that in your motion.
I'm looking for...
I move that we, council approves second reading with changes as read and adopt ordinance 2016 dash 12.
A second? I have a motion and a second, thankfully. Any discussion?
Does the motion include, oh...
The dates, the additional...
Section, I'm not getting back to it.
Second reading with changes as read.
Changing the 75th to the 100th, so including 1.24.030.
Yes, and, and adding that change to the title as well.
Right. Any, what else? Okay, well, just out of... Um, since we have the motion and second, a little discussion, does anybody know, council, the, um, what the percentage of the number of signatures that are required for a, um, a petition? You know, it, 'cause the, the timeframe, i- isn't that directly related to their time to collect the signatures?
No. Um, I do not know the number, the percentage off the top of my head, but that's usually the city elections officer would contact the county and make sure we were correct, but... the city elections officer would contact the county and make sure we were correct, but-
But it's, I assume it's a same, it's a, probably a percentage of the voter population, and so, you know, if there's three thousand voters, um-
The number of signatures required for a city initiative is fifteen percent of the registered voters.
Fifteen.
Voters, that number is six hundred and sixty-five signatures for the City of Lincoln City, as of January twenty-sixth of two thousand sixteen.
So that, that's what the timeframe is giving to collect roughly six hundred and plus signatures.
A lot more pluses, we know, because most of the signed aren't valid.
Fifteen percent, was that the percentage?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's valid signatures, I keep wanting to put that, because I remember for my election, I turned in a whole bunch, and they just said, nope, 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 so, okay. Any other discussion? Nope. Here, let's do a roll call, and that's just for the back of it.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Appicello, appreciate your patience with us and working through this. Okay, we are at twenty-six, ordinance two thousand sixteen thirteen. Your Honor, this is first reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, an ordinance amending the city, Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan Map to change the Comprehensive Plan Map designation from SR, Suburban Residential, a Lincoln County designation, to Commercial Recreation District, and amending the zoning map to change the zoning map designation from Lincoln County R one A Residential to RC Commercial Recreation District for five zero one zero Northeast Logan Road. Ask for approval of first reading, and if it's unanimous, we can proceed to second reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance two, number two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan Map to change the Comprehensive Plan Map designation from SR, Suburban Residential, a Lincoln County designation, to Commercial Recreation District, and amending the zoning map to change the zoning map designation from Lincoln County R one A Residential to RC Commercial Recreation District for five zero one zero Northeast Logan Road. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, this is first reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, LCMC, Title Three, Revenue and Finance, repealing Chapter three point two eight, Marijuana Taxation. By way of explanation, this is the portion that I removed from the ordinance two thousand sixteen ten, the marijuana taxation to be referred to the voters. I did that because in going through the ballot title exercise, it was clear that we don't need to vote on repeal of ordinance, or Chapter three point two eight, sending it to the voters just confused things. I did include a delayed effective date in this ordinance, so it will not be effective until December, just in case the referred tax measure does not pass. We'd still have some time to think about whether or not we really want to repeal Chapter three point two eight.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, good, good call.
The, so I'd ask for approval of first reading, and if it's unanimous, we'll, we can proceed to second reading.
So moved.
Second.
And you guys can fight it out for that motion. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, LCMC, Title Three, Revenue and Finance, repealing Chapter three point two eight, Marijuana Taxation. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are at resolutions, resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing budget transfers for the City of Lincoln City in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year budgets.
Evening, hearing council, excuse me.
I appreciate you staying late. I knew you'd work on it.
Actually, I had a lot of work done while I was listening to you at my desk. We have a few end-of-year budget transfers that we're requesting, basically moving money from one category to another, just to adjust for actual spending. Handful of items, none of them very large. I could go through them one by one if you'd like, or just take questions, whichever you'd prefer.
I'm good, just, anyone want to speak? No specifics? No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And, and fill me again, what am I doing with this one?
For an adoption of this resolution for the budget changes.
Motion for that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-two, a resolution approving referral to the electors of the City of Lincoln City, the question of imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer within the City of Lincoln City, ordinance two thousand sixteen ten.
Your Honor, we're simply looking for approval of this resolution, which would refer the matter to the voters. If you want to talk about the ballot title, which I actually drafted but have not officially transmitted to the city recorder, we can, we can talk about it as well as the explanatory statement, which typically you approve. I tried to be as, again, it's a tax measure, so it's sometimes hard to stay awake with regard to these, but we do have a little time if you want to revisit this. I will, would ask that when you approve this, you authorize the, the elections officer to correct some, I know she pointed out there was a word repeated in the, in the ballot title, or it's one of those explanatory statements, and I can't find it at this moment, but if you choose to approve the resolution, you authorize her to correct the typographical error that she found, which I can't find.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I just want to say I appreciate, under the question section, a question which plainly phrases the chief purpose of the measure, so an affirmative response to the question corresponds to an affirmative vote on the measure. I appreciate those very much as a voter. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, all right, more, roll call, please.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, special order of business, appointment of council member to serve on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Goal Nine and Ten-
Your Honor, I apologize, there was a blank in the, in the, I should have asked, there was a blank in the, in the explanatory statement about a dollar amount per month, and I don't have it to tell you, but I'd like the council to authorize the finance director to give me that dollar amount and insert it. I apologize. In exhibit three of the explanatory statement, there's a blank for a dollar amount, and I just didn't have it at the time.
And again, you are looking for what from us?
In exhibit three to the resolution you just approved, there is a blank of the estimated revenue for the marijuana tax would be approximately blank number of dollars per month. I don't have that number, but I'd ask that you authorize the finance director to give me that estimate so I can insert it.
Do we need a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Okay, that's what is happening. I have a motion and a second. Can I just say, in all favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, so, yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, back to it. We were at, appointment of council member to serve on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Goal Nine and Ten Plan, buildable lands, housing needs, economic opportunities. Anybody? Well-
Could give you some background information on that. The housing needs assessment, the economic opportunities assessment, and buildable lands inventory, it'd be a big part of the foundation for the revision to the comprehensive plan that we're undertaking. We've selected a consultant to do the work, and we actually will be having a phone conference with them tomorrow to sort of get the project rolling. There is, as part of the project, there's a Technical Advisory Committee, which right now consists of representatives from the casino, Hispanic community, Chamber of Commerce, urban renewal, our city finance consultant, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Oregon Solutions, Small Business Center, some realtors, Pacific Corp., Business Oregon, Lincoln County Economic Development, Samaritan Health, Confederated Tribes of the Celestians Indians, and the Northwest Housing Corporation. The consultants have suggested that we also have a member from the city council on this. There will be four meetings involved, and they would happen over the course of the next nine months. There's, no dates are set yet.
Well, I'd be happy to if nobody else was willing to jump in on that. Definitely defer some of the authority. No, okay, I guess. Well, I'm, I'm in it, that's exciting, I think it's a great thing, part of it.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. I'll do it in my free time. Sorry, Deb. All right, she's good to me, though. Okay, city manager, city attorney reports.
I just have three things to mention. The first is on your desk is our new visitor's guide. You'll notice the format has changed, it's much more visual than what we've done in the past. The upstairs has just been very creative with it, we're really pleased with it. The second is a reminder that on Wednesday at six P M., we have, I'm sorry, at five P M., we have our joint work session with the county commission here in this building. And then you have also on your desk an invitation from the Newport City Council to attend a work session on July twelfth at three P M. in Newport City Hall to discuss housing issues that impact all of our communities. This invitation has gone out to the county commission, plus all of the cities in Lincoln County. The genesis of this came from some conversations that a couple of elected officials had, and then carried on at my monthly luncheon that I have with the city managers, where Spencer Naval from Newport discussed the idea of putting this together with us, and we all felt that we're dealing with so many of the same issues as it pertains to housing, that it would be a great idea, and Newport said they would be the host of it.
It is, and I want to say, I think Mr. Anderson was a big reason this is happening, so thank you very much. Well done.
That's all I am, Mayor.
And thank you to Ed and his staff. I'm just thrilled with what they're doing up there.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chandler, are you looking for hand raising for who would like to attend?
The invitation's for everybody to come, and it's being advertised that all of, that there will be quarms. Yeah, I think that would be a great idea, so that I can respond back and let them know.
I'll be there.
So three, okay.
But I won't be here Wednesday, but I would like to be able to attend telephonic. Wednesday. And that was it for you, Mr. Appicello.
Your Honor, I don't have anything for council action, I'll just, I need to alert you to the fact we've received last Monday a number of public records requests. Two of those requests are really for council executive session materials going back to two thousand and eleven. In consultation with outside counsel on this, we concur that the city council will need to make a determination on each of the recordings as to whether or not the disclosure of certain material is inconsistent with the purpose for which the executive session was conducted, and that, of course, means more of your time in executive session to review those executive sessions, which may in fact lead to more requests. But we really have no way around it, it, the, we will follow our public records procedure and provide first to the requister an estimate of the time. I will have to do a lot of work, as will the city recorder, in reviewing all the prior executive session meetings, so that you do not have to do that, and then I'll come to you in the executive session and tell you what the meeting was about, and we can, you would have to come to a consensus as to whether or not you wish to disclose that material. Again, this will take a lot of time, my time, the recorder's time, will provide the estimate. I am not sure whether or not we can charge, under the public records law, for your time as to when you meet and have to go through this and come to an agreement. So I'll research that and see if we can do it, but I'm telling you, if in fact the requister does in fact submit a deposit or agrees to pay the fees, then we're going to be spending a lot of time going over some exec, executive sessions going back to two thousand and eleven, so.
You don't need anything from us tonight, you're just giving us a heads up.
Not tonight, I'm just giving you a heads up.
Okay, anything else? And we have no executive session. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? See none. Announcements or comments by city council? Good grief, I want to say fabulous, oh, go ahead.
I have a couple things. One of the things that was in the pile we were given tonight with V R D comments is a letter from Wendy Kellington regarding a V R D in Depot Bay, written to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. What's the relevance? Where'd it come from?
It would have been, I don't have in front of me if it says up on a V R D at lincolncity.org.
Oh.
It would have been sent there, but I don't have in front of me, so I'm not sure which letter you're referring to.
April twenty-second, two thousand sixteen letter.
I believe that's a comment to county about the county's proposed ordinances.
Okay. I didn't, oh, relevance, it had to, we were doing-
Just, you're not alone.
Yeah, really.
I have pleasure of reading everyone.
I feel better about that. I wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending the opening performance of the Celest Bay Music Festival on Wednesday. It was a wonderful turnout, sold-out crowd at the cultural center, and there are still several more concerts that are available to us tomorrow night through Monday, the fourth of July.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations to the V C B and the city of Lincoln City for a great guide festival. I, we don't have the numbers yet, but I know it was very well attended. I know that the boosters benefited greatly from the vending, and I'm really excited to hear their final numbers on that. I'll be attending Franklin Graham, is coming to town to have a rally at the Capitol tomorrow, which is kind of exciting. Beyond that, I don't think I have a whole lot, so if that's it, that's it. God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. All right. Oh, oh, yeah, please, thank you.